What yellow thing? Oh, your highlighter? Oh, the pink one.
See, my children want to start at four for tonight by the time their mother will be home. If I'm not home by midnight, they're calling out reinforcements. They don't believe I attended so many meetings.
Hey, can I always turn TV on?
Steak and wash.
Larry, I quizzed them, but somehow I think they got one of them. I told them unless somebody was, you know, after having an ambulance, they don't come in. Well, one night I kept my phone on expecting a call.
Are we still waiting, Jean? Okay, well, there's a few that we have to do. Being seven o'clock, we'll start the meeting. Welcome, everybody. The agenda this evening is recognition of retirees and then visitors, approval of minutes, the Ahern Middle School School Improvement Plan, the Foxborough High School School Improvement Plan, changes to the Foxborough High School Student Handbook, new facilities projects that'll take place over the summer, a summary of the draft EQA report, 2006-2007 accomplishments in response to the EQA report, a CPAC recommendation, approval of utility bills, utility bids, the fiscal year '07 surplus update, a monthly budget summary statement, policy revision update, and then a response to Dr. Nevada and Mr. Ballin, and then other matters. The police chief and the schools have not finished their review of safety, so that item will not be on the agenda tonight. We hope to have it on our next meeting's agenda. So the first item this evening is recognition of retirees. We have a group of those special folks with us tonight. Jean, we'll call them up one at a time, congratulate them and recognize them. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
The first one is Susan Brown, who was hired as an elementary teacher in 1972. She moved to the fifth grade level when the fifth grade was moved to the Ahern Middle School. Mrs. Brown was a JV field hockey coach for a number of years and also served on the building base support team at the Ahern School. Okay, we can sit up and down, stand up, whatever you want. Our next one is Jeannie Carr, who began her career in 1979 with the Foxborough Public Schools as a guidance secretary at the Ahern Middle School. In July of '03, she moved into the position of school building secretary, where she served until her retirement. Ms. Carr has been with the school system for 27 and a half years.
Come back and visit often.
The next person, I believe, is not here tonight, but it's Diane Dolan, who was hired as an elementary art teacher in 1994. She has taught at the Ahern Middle School and most recently at Foxborough High School. Is Diane here tonight? No. All right. Next is Keith Gibson, who came to Foxborough in 2004 as our athletic director. Prior to Foxborough, Mr. Gibson taught physical ed and served as athletic director in the Norton Public Schools. He has extensive background in coaching and has been involved in several athletic associations. Next, we have Margaret McMillan, who first joined the Foxborough Schools in 1975 as a first-grade substitute teacher covering a maternity leave. She began her career at the Lewis School and has taught at the elementary level at Borrow for many years. Ms. McMillan has been involved as a Borrow Building Liaison, school council member, and is an end cast remediation instructor and has spent 31 years with us.
She's not here yet, but once she arrives, we'll make sure we get her again.
Okay. And our last one is Joan Mendez, was appointed in 1968 as an associate food service worker for the Lewis School. When the Lewis School closed, Joan moved to the Taylor School. In 1985, she was appointed to the position of assistant cook at the Taylor School, and in 1994, as assistant cook, she helped open the IGO School and has remained there ever since. While employed at Foxborough, she's attended courses provided by the Stalker Institute and the School Nutrition Association, is a member of the School Nutrition Association, and is certified in food safety and sanitation. Now, before we move on to visitors, we also wanted to take a few moments to recognize someone who's not retiring, but someone who's leaving, someone who made a big fuss about not having a fuss. But when I see the work and the leadership and the direction that Jean's put forward in the last year with her team supporting her, they all stepped up and did a great job for us. To not recognize her would be a great disservice. And so we wanted to recognize you this evening with a couple of gifts. We have here from the school committee, we have a gift that you can, why don't you come around if you don't mind? This is a gift. This is a gift that hopefully you have proudly on your desk to remember all of us and the things you've done for us. We'll never forget you. We also have some beautiful flowers for you. And the music department wanted you to have a music shirt, sweatshirt. Music makes the difference. You are the first one to be a guest conductor. You know that, and you're special to the music program, and Mr. Massey and his team wanted you to have that as well. So you're very welcome. Now, we'll see how bad she gets. She wanted no fuss at all. Jean, did you want to say anything? Can you say anything?
I was hoping this wasn't going to happen. Today, the people in central office also had lunch made and gave me a sweatshirt, so I'm well-sweatshredded. It says Foxborough Warriors. I am the new principal of Eastern Hills High School in Fort Worth, Texas. I have 1,800 very needy children. It's an underperforming school, inner city. It's what I wanted. I have been blessed to be given this school. They have so many problems that we've already addressed here, so I'm thrilled to take what I've learned. I am proud of the work we've done here in Foxborough. I want everybody to know what a fabulous administrative team you have. Thank you for two and a half wonderful years.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of, I'm sorry, is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized this evening or speak? Seeing none, I will move on to the next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes first? While I'm waiting, I have a couple. On the top of page two, the first full sentence is, "If no money becomes available through the state, there may be a need to work with selectmen to validate our request and then go back to the voters." I'm not sure we were talking about validation of our request. I think what we were saying is if no money becomes available, we'll need to work with the selectmen to build the consensus across town to take back to the voters.
To build that consensus with the town.
Right. In other words, the whole discussion was, we're working, we've had the public, we've had the tour of the school, we've had the presentation on the needs, we've brought in someone, we're working the issue for the next year through the state, but if in fact the state doesn't come through, the 35-year-old building will be 36, 37 by then, and we'll still have these major capital needs, so they'll have to build the case. Hopefully, in that timeframe, we've built a level of credibility with the taxpayers so that they know how critical this is. The other issue, Paul, on page three, when we're talking about the defibrillators, it says here that you recommend forming a committee, and I think you were talking about having the principal set up that committee, and I just wanted to make sure that since he's sitting here tonight, that we make sure that this committee gets set up so that we can have the recommendations before the school year starts so that we can purchase whatever equipment that that committee believes we need.
I think it was the new athletic director to set up the committee.
The new athletic, okay. He starts.
Would you just let him know, Jeff?
That's one of his first goals and objectives?
Right.
Other questions or comments?
Also there, at the end of the paragraph there on the defibrillators, where it says, "Ms. Kaminsky wanted to make sure that the money would be available for their use." I believe both myself and Katie, you said it wasn't the money available, it was that they, whatever, that we make that decision by the middle of August, because that's when we'd say that's. So, yeah, I don't know if you're comfortable with that, but perhaps I should say, "Ms. Kaminsky and Ms. Adair asked to make sure that this decision or this decision is in place by ..."
That this policy was in place.
The policy was in place by the middle of August.
And I think, I would add to that, if you would agree, the two of you, that we also talked as a board that there was a consensus that we would look to the revolving account to fund this, we would not let money be an issue in this important issue. So the minutes could reflect that there was a consensus to take it out of the revolving account. Any other comments on the minutes?
I had just one on page two, the student information system. Perhaps I heard wrong, but I thought we had, Mr. Bordelotti had explained that we may, it's not a funding issue, but we may need to sustain the old system while he's implementing the new. So at the end of that sentence of the first paragraph, where it says, "Discussion filed in the committee asks Mr. Bordelotti come back to the committee with updates." And I believe we may want to say something like, "As additional monies may be required to keep the former SIS software system during implementation of the new system." Because that's, we, I don't know if anyone else heard that or ...
I didn't hear that. I had asked him to come back because I want to make sure before school starts, it's up, it's running, it's fine, but we can add that, I'm fine with that.
And my own other request, and again, Wendy, you did an awesome job. I think it's great, on page one, where we mentioned so many of the people by name who attended, Mr. Randy Scholes, Mr. Andrew Gala. I, all the selectmen were here, well, actually, no, Jim Thrasher, Linda Walsh, and Paul Feeny were here, and I think when a selectman comes, we should mention their name as well.
That's fine, we can add that. Do you have all that, Wendy?
Jim, Linda, and Paul Feeny. Chris Martis was here also.
Then we should mention Dr. Martis as well, he was here.
Any other corrections? Do I have an approval? Do I have a motion approved? Made by Katie, seconded by Monica. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries five to zero. The next item is the Ahern Middle School School Improvement Plan.
Good evening. Earlier this year, you approved the academic portion of our school improvement plan, the academic portion that addressed the core value of challenging and innovative educational experiences, promoting academic excellence by meeting the needs of students in ways that engage them in their learning. Since that time, the school council has worked on the other core values, and I would like to thank the school council, Judy Norwood, our community member, Lisa Alden, Judy Brooks, Brian Walton, John Riley, Mike Tiano, Tara Tatchell, Lisa Bluman, and Shelley Farrell, for the continuing work on this plan. The portion that we have not reviewed yet begins on page 25 with, "The goal of a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment fosters positive attitudes among students and staff." And we've picked two target areas. The first one is to continue existing respect programs, evaluate their effectiveness, and recommend new programs if indicated. This was in response to the root causes of inappropriate and disrespectful student social behaviors and lack of motivation, self-motivation, and lack of positive attitudes among students related to self and school. The second target area for that core value is to coordinate the school safety plan with school and district-wide and town-wide safety plan, which is an ongoing need. Our next goal, "Respect for the diversity and dignity of individuals and cultures enriches learning and supports the development of responsible citizenship," has two target areas. That begins on page 28. The first goal was to improve student participation in school-sponsored activities and volunteer programs. The root causes we identified were, students may have arranged activities that don't involve the school, activities that are available may not be what students want to do, and insufficient funding for after-school activities. And our second target area was increase guidance staff in order to provide effective student support services. The last goal begins on page 30. "To ensure a quality education cultivated by ongoing communication and shared resources among parents, teachers, town organizations, and residents is the responsibility of the entire community." And our target area was to improve communications with middle school parents, elementary schools, high school, and the community. And what we identified as root causes were difficulties maintaining Internet information, insufficient communication with other schools on a regular basis, and insufficient dissemination of information for parents to use to assist student academic achievement. And hopefully, these three non-academic goals will help enrich the environment and support student achievement from the academic core value.
Sue, I had a question for you. I got an email from a parent that was raising a question. Said for several years now, they've been asking about fifth grade honor roll. Can you give the public an update on your thoughts about applying honor roll to the fifth grade as well?
Part of the answer to that question is that the history of why the honor roll did not include the fifth grade, I understand, was as the kids moved up, but it is something that we will be looking at this year in terms of whether that should include fifth graders as they're part of the middle school, and they are getting letter grades this year as opposed to participating in a standards-based report card. It's a very good question.
I think the question is, would you have that in place by September, or are you talking about a year from September? They would like to see, they indicated an email, it's been many years that it's been discussed, and they wanted to know if it was possible to have it by September. So I decided I would ask you the question.
I don't think perhaps by September, but October, November.
Okay. But this school year, you think you'd be able to ...
I think we'd be able to finalize and answer that question definitively. It needs to be early enough so that parents are aware, students are aware, but that the school council and all the stakeholders have some input into whether that's the appropriate move to make that change.
I remember when I was on the school council, that was something that was addressed. And again, you'd want the school council members to be there, to be part of that process. And if I remember correctly, part of the issue was trying to ease that transition for those fourth graders coming into fifth and now putting kind of that pressure of the honor roll on them as they're adjusting to rebuilding, new milieu, the whole thing. So again, I think it is definitely a good question. I've gotten the same question from parents as well, but I guess it's always something that we visit and decide.
And I think it's something that needs to be brought up to all the people involved.
Good. Thank you, I appreciate that. Questions about the committee members?
I'd like to ask, if you would, Ms. Abrams, I think it's remarkable that the guidance staff took three years, but it's going to be put back in place. First, it was elementary, now it was the middle school. Could you just overview very briefly, when you say proactive guidance department, since that will be reinstated for the first time, what are some of the things that you would have in addition to the Step to Respect and Connections programs?
One of the complications of having two guidance counselors and 900 students is that one guidance counselor for 450 students is not always able to provide even the responsive crisis intervention needs. And the administrative team, I think, has worked well to help each student as much as possible, as well as the staff. The staff with guidance instituted the Connections Program, which is delivered by staff members and works at some of the guidance issues that aren't as deep, for example, goal-setting, decision-making, a support for academic success. An additional guidance counselor will enable us to go deeper, to work with groups of students on having guidance in a classroom at designated times to work with kids at different grade levels on things like coping strategies, peer relationships and effective social skills, decision-making, problem-solving, conflict resolution, multicultural and diversity awareness, education and understanding self, including strengths and weaknesses, self-esteem, and also dealing with issues that may come up such as Internet safety, stress, anxiety, and perhaps be able to provide some parent groups as well to reach out to the parents. That's a lot for one person to do, but you shared that.
Thank you, I think that's helpful.
I was intrigued by the number one and 250, because I know in the high school, when he asked cutoffs one and 300, but I can see where 250 would be an ideal goal.
It would be, the additional guidance counselor would make one to 300, which is much more manageable. And if we can help students with some of the budding issues that appear in the middle school, especially in grade seven and eight, perhaps we can ease some of their transitions into the high school.
So this will bring it down to one and three?
One to 300.
Anything else, Martha? Katie?
I would just like to say one other thing, and that is, the use of Teacher Web, again, has been a phenomenal link, and I know that your communication goal is to continue to improve communication with parents, and I have seen both at the Ahern and the middle school, a great increase in teachers using the Teacher Web, and it's, I can't tell you, it's a remarkable instrument, so I thank you.
Thank you. We also, we have about 80% of the staff who utilizes Teacher Web, and in addition for homework assignments in grade seven and eight, we have a group of mentors who put homework on the web and on the telephone on the homework hotline, so that if they speak too quickly, and you have Internet access, you're also, you also have access to that. And we're working on making sure that it's updated, so that if a teacher lags behind and it's not as useful, we try to address that when we find that. We've also instituted Teacher Notes as a paper communication.
I think it's just remarkable for, in support of academic achievement, and it supports the communication, and it puts the responsibility on the students, and they are learning to be independent learners, which is just a gift. Thank you.
Well done.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Theodosi, you're here now to discuss the school improvement plan, and then for Matt, we'll go right into the student handbook.
Good evening. Before I begin, I'd just like to recognize our members of the school council. Marie DeeDee and Sue Maddie have been on, I think Marie's been on longer than three years, but both will be stepping down and will be welcoming new members to our committee, but I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize and thank them for their hard work. Janet Fisher and Christine Lowey, our other parent representative, Janet is here tonight. She is also the chair, the assistant chair of the committee and kind of my right-hand person, so I appreciate her effort and energies. And our teachers, our faculty representatives, Mary Ann Kayan, Katie Parnas, and Dave Walkens, and Matt Colson, our graduating seniors, our student representative. What we tried to do with our school improvement plan is to break into three subcommittees and to be able to recognize the core values developed by the district. So we broke into three subcommittees, which is our safety, academic, and communication subcommittees. So between those three subcommittees, we monitored the improvement plan to account for all our core values that have been set forth by the district. So what I like to do is go over the 2007-2009 School Improvement Plan. The first piece is on page seven, and it's the only page I'll refer to, because I'll kind of go through the process pretty quickly, is kind of the action plan, the generic action plan that's set forth for the math and the English programs. I think it's important that each year I just show you what our thought process is pertaining to where we put students and why we put them, and then what I'll do is talk about the specific action plan for our English and our math departments this year. As far as math is concerned, our focus is on the open response. What we've done is analyze the data, and we're going to try to reflect it more, not only into the math daily curriculum, but also, as I go on, we'll put it into a school-wide daily curriculum. We've spent more time studying strategies to solving problems, but I think one of the keys that I think will help us to continue to improve our scores will also be the review. We'll probably have at least a one-week review prior to testing, and I think for some students, it's just a matter of brushing off the dust a little bit for a few extra questions, a few extra points that we hope will move us, or continue to move us in a positive direction. As far as SAT improvement is concerned, we have significant enrollment increases in both math and English this year, and I think the key is getting our students to understand the expectations and to practice with the SAT curriculum. I think math has demonstrated a positive trend in the last couple of years, and I expect that trend to continue, but I think it's relative, it's based on the number of students we actively involve, either in our own programs or in some of the evening programs that we can offer through other agencies. I don't think it matters what they choose, but I think it's a matter that if we're going to improve consistently, our students have to buy into that process and be part of the SAT process. So our goal there is to try to increase the average to about 550, so that's the, I mean, the numerical goal, if you will. As far as English is concerned, we feel strongly that a lot of times with the open response questions, the kids don't know what the question's asking, because either they don't spend enough time looking at the question, or they literally don't understand the question. So what Ms. Keen has thought of is to look at some close reading techniques where they'll look to understand more the meanings of the words, the connotation, the denotation, looking at the syntax of the passages, and some of the rhetoric. at the syntax of the passages, and some of the rhetorical devices that are used. So it's really looking more specifically at the reading itself to be able to understand. Before you can analyze anything, you certainly have to understand this, and we think that problematically for us, our kids just have to read the instructions a little closer, the passages a little closer, and hopefully with this close reading, they'll come away with a better understanding. We'll also focus more on nonfictional readings, such as persuasive or informational texts. And to try to ensure compliance, the other piece is more common assessments. So, you know, I think you helped us with the midterm and the final piece, and I think our teachers will develop more common assessments for some of the tests in the English one, English two areas, so that we're just reinforcing our expectations across the board. School-wide to help in the program, we've got the writing across the curriculum piece that we talked about last year, and we implemented. We'll go with two more writing prompts, and this year, we looked at the writing and were able to look at student strengths and weaknesses, but more importantly, we facilitated a dialogue between our faculty as to what good writing looks like, and to collaboratively score writing prompts, so that we're all on the same page, so we look at it and we can say, geez, this is what a four looks like, three, two, one. So I think the more we do that, the more conversations we have on those areas, the better off we're going to be. As far as the next initiative, the extended block, we just started, and I think I ran into more roadblocks than I anticipated, so from a time and energy standpoint, I pulled back on that with the idea that revisit it. And if you recall, what we were looking to do is take a block of time, whether it's seven, between seventy and ninety minutes, and rotate that through our seven-day cycle, so that all students would have the ability to access ninety minutes of learning in some capacity, a little bit more flexible, whether it's through implementing more in-depth study in our science labs or other lab pieces, utilizing off-site facilities for potential gym classes, presentations, debates, those kind of pieces, we think will be enhanced by a longer block once a day, each day through the cycle, so every department can take, have the opportunity to utilize that. The NEASC accreditation process is the next piece that never goes away, it's always around the corner, so we're four years away from our accreditation visitation, if you will. So what we need to look at, the district change, the core values, the mission expectation, we need now to look at our school values, expectations, and realign if necessary. I think the critical point is, whatever we say we're doing, we need to make sure that we're doing it and doing it appropriately. So we will take the next two years to go through that self-study with the expectation and mission. The other piece that intrigues me is the virtual high school. In the back of the School Improvement Plan is a listing of all the courses offered by the virtual high school, so I'm looking at opportunity, we have students that are on independent study, as they go to college, they'll be utilizing more online pieces of education. So I thought, starting with seniors, working the way down, depending upon if the fit is right, to have those students have the ability to take courses. We don't offer it for high school, whether they're AP, whether they're elective enrichment courses, but it would give us the opportunity to help twenty, between twenty and ultimately fifty students per semester, so it's something we plan to look at. Those were the areas that our academic subcommittee is looking at. As far as our safety subcommittee, our goal is to continue to provide a safe and nurturing environment. We administered climate surveys, hopefully you all got one at home, to students, parents, and faculty, and what we're looking for is priority areas that our students and teachers say are concerns, validating some of the areas we think are strengths, and getting the parents' perception of what they think, you know, are their perceptions about what we do well or what we do poorly. So we'll identify those areas, and identify at least three action pieces, if you will, for the students, for the faculty, and for the teachers. The other piece is to publish our crisis response flip chart. You've heard us speak about the flip chart. We've had changes that have to be made. We're looking at it district-wide, so how we can unilaterally put the same information into each plan. Also, because we've become experts with our emergency management plan, we'll now review it over the summer and evaluate our protocols and see how well or how poorly we did on our three crisis situations, and rewrite, refine some of that information as well. The piece that didn't happen this year, and we're still working on it, is we're still looking for a security audit. It's pretty expensive to have an independent agent come in, but we're still working through our police liaison to bring in some security group, if you will, from another community, just to tell us about our pluses and the few minuses that are part of our system. As far as core values are concerned, as you walk, that's a couple around, as you walk through our building next year, you'll see a few of these signs up in our, or a lot of our signs up in our building. We've developed core values for our students, and now what we'll do is take those core values, and we've met with the faculty last week, and we'll look at what those values look like in the classroom, in the cafeteria, in the hallways. So as we talk about academic excellence, what does that mean? As we talk about respect for self, respect for others, integrity, open-mindedness and responsibility, those are the values that we will, we've agreed to live by, if you will, and I think, I think it'll have a positive effect on our school community. I think the clearer we are with our expectation for our kids, the more they'll respond. And faculty as well, it doesn't just apply to students, it applies to the school community. We'll also bring in a national speaker, thanks to the Invencis Company, they were gracious enough to provide us with a large grant to bring in a national speaker, who will talk about classroom management, dealing with the reluctant learners, talking about teachers and reflecting on their practices in the classroom. So we'll have a whole year of various professional developments, based on helping to empower our teachers to do a better job in the classroom, and continue to improve, I should say, in the classroom, as we all look to do. As far as the communications subcommittee is concerned, again, we're just looking for continuous ways to better communicate with the parents and the community, so that they understand where we're coming from, and we certainly want to continue to understand their thoughts and their views on situations. The school council, and I know the school committee has talked a little bit about it, or maybe a lot about it, mass communication system to directly have parents be able to access when information or timely information is necessary. Our list server is up and ready to go, so within the next week, we'll have a message out to those people who've signed up to our list server, and we'll decide protocols, what's important, what we want to put on the list server, how often we want to get that information out to the community. And again, it's another avenue, it doesn't replace the mail home, it's just another venue, if you will, to reach out to the parents. You know, one of the things I harp onto our faculty, and I think we're slowly moving in a direction, is that we're service providers, and our job is to, again, provide as much information to the community as we possibly can, and to reach out as much as we can. Sometimes it might not be appreciated, but in most cases, excuse me, it is. So I think this list server will be another way to mass mail, if you will, the public. We've increased the regularity of our newsletter, and to at least every six weeks, so we're on a schedule. We implemented a staff survey, communication survey, that we have the data, we'll analyze it in the summer, the best ways to reach our teachers. Sometimes we wonder why we don't get responses from teachers when we ask them mass questions, so our concern is, you know, what do you need to know from us? What do you need from us in order to better communicate back and forth with the administration and the teachers? And then I agreed, I don't know, grudgingly, to monthly coffee hours, that could be a short-lived piece, I don't know.
I think it's great.
Janet twisted my arm on that one and said, let's have some coffee hours and see how that goes. So again, we'll try it, reach out and see what happens. Mr. Jackson's going to be my first speaker, he just doesn't know it yet.
I just don't know where you're going to get the $200.
That'll kill him fast.
Keys, raise it. The next goal, implementing the new student information center, system, we're looking to, for a program, we have a program actually, that will support the electronic submitting of daily attendance, class attendance, electronic grade books that we have now, and hopefully down the road, the parents will have that access to go in and see how their children are doing on a regular basis. We continue to place information on the website, handbook, school profile, school council pages, minutes, program of studies. So again, the key is, you get it up, now how do you maintain it and make it current? And so again, the school council has been very supportive in that aspect. And the last piece in the appendix, I just gave you kind of an overview of some of the information we look at to judge what we do, or determine what we do, from the school report card to the school profile, various MCAS data, the surveys we sent out. So again, I think it's ambitious, I think we'll have some fun with it, and hopefully good things will happen.
Couple of questions for you, Jeff.
Sure.
First of all, on the security audit.
Yeah.
Since we have Dr. Martus sitting in the audience as well, I want to make it clear two things. One, money will not be an object to do that and do it well. And number two, I don't want it limited to the high school, I want us to, whoever we find, to look at every one of our schools, and I want to be able to reassure all the parents that we have brought an expert in, we've looked at our schools, and anything we need to do to provide greater safety, we take action. So let's not let money be an issue, we have revolving accounts that we can tap to do this. Let's continue to look for the right person, though, let's not just get someone. I know the chief is working on this, I know that you folks are working on it, Dr. Martus may know some folks as well, but I really would like to see us, before school starts in September, to have a full report with action items that can be taken care of before the school year begins. The second issue is, you talked about the climate survey, I had a couple of comments. There were lots of confusion over the instructions, and the instructions didn't kind of come out until after the survey, they were mailed home separately. Two things, one, why didn't we use an internet survey rather than a paper survey? And number two, are you going to share the results of that survey with us as a committee?
Yeah, absolutely, all the results will be shared, and we'll publish them, and like we did our last survey, communications survey, we'll put it on the website. Why we didn't use a net survey, I don't know. I don't have a good answer, other than the fact that we sat with the subcommittee, worked through the items, asked parents, input on the items, and developed the survey. I think what caught us off guard was when we asked Scantron for the specific Scantron sheet to use, I'm not so sure we got the best for our needs and habits, letting that add into the confusion with the survey.
There just was a lot of confusion over the survey. The last question on your coffee hours, one of the things that I think is important for especially your team, as we prepare a request for the state for some $13 million to upgrade, I shouldn't even say upgrade, but to replace antiquated parts of the high school, like windows and air conditioning, heating systems and boilers, et cetera, it's very important that we continue the outreach to the public, so that they understand that there's a level of trust, there's a level of information. So anything that you and your team can continue to do throughout the community, to make sure that all the parents understand that this 35-year-old high school has some aging parts, like a roof and a heating system, that are going to need to be replaced. And while we're doing everything we can to bridge that gap with the selectmen and with the state, and build relationships across the community, your administration should be very helpful in helping us get that message across, and I really appreciate that effort.
Sure.
Bevy, do you have any questions?
Very ambitious. I hope you can find a way to have one, at least one rotating period through the cycle of the extended learning time. It is, I can't say how beneficial it is to the learning process.
Katie?
Yeah, I did have some questions about the actual plan, I just want to echo your decision to have the coffee hours, I think that's a great idea. I remember that, attending those when my children were entering elementary school, and it was very helpful, and I think as the kids get older, there's less information that they bring to you as a parent. So I think that bridging that gap by having coffee hours at the high school is, I bet you'll be surprised how many parents actually attend that, so I think it's a great idea. And if you need some help, I'll bring the coffee, or the doughnuts, or whatever, we have a problem with the money. But just a couple of questions regarding some specifics. Let's see. Okay, one of the things on page nine, you talk about identifying students who failed to earn a proficiency rating or better on the grade eight MCAS exam, and assigning those students to an MCAS review math class. Your resource allocation, you say possible workshop to train teachers, is that, is that something that you need now? Because I know you're adding additional classes for MCAS review next year because of the MCAS changing now, that, you know, in terms of the scores. So you're going to need additional teachers, do you need additional resources to train those teachers, so that you have them up to speed by the fall?
One of the thought processes for our teachers is that in probably about a six-year span, we try to rotate the courses, so everyone teaches everything, so that they can have better conversations about what grade nine math looks like, grade 10 math. But, so in the process, it would be the cycle of new teachers are coming on board to provide them professional development on the MCAS, whether it's strategies, or it really, we'd come in the form of probably a summer curriculum, where they could sit down and share the expertise of the former teachers that were teaching the class. So I don't think it would be substantial money, that's why I put possible, it might not be this year, it might be the following year, but I think it could be reflected in the curriculum work.
Okay. On page 10, you talk about proficiency with the open response MCAS questions, which has clearly been identified as a deficiency across all grade levels with open response in math, English, and in science. And you say the assessment schedule is going to be throughout the school year. I guess I'm just wondering, a little more, being a little more specific about what you mean about throughout, is that something that's going to be happening per cycle, you know?
I would say at least quarterly, for instance, the math department will score a generic open response as a department, so they'll look at the student work and determine where they are in this process, the improvement, so it'll be more observable by the actual departments, as opposed to a hardcore number associated with it, the hard number comes with the test.
Okay, and so then those teacher assessments that you list under that same objective, the familiarity with the MCAS testing format, you say teacher assessment. In certain areas, you talk about formal teacher assessment, in other areas, you just say teacher assessment, I'm trying to understand the difference between that, so that?
Observation of the teacher, again, identifying class strengths and weaknesses as they go as well.
So particular to a class.
Right, and particular to a class, but ultimately through the common assessments, it'll be particular, I mean, specific to grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, whatever those general assessments are, midterm, final, major test.
Okay.
And as we, as we go through the process more regularly, the open response question will be placed on that quiz, on that test.
Okay, now, another issue that I know is in the district improvement plan, we talk about science. It's not something that is in really any of the school improvement plans, except for the Ahearn, that, where you really talked about the open response piece of the science. And I guess, I know that we're doing a science review in September, but I guess I'm wondering what we're going to be doing, really as a district, but also at the high school, because the class of 2010 is going to have to pass biology for graduation requirement. And I guess, are we going to be waiting until that review is complete next year, or are there, things going to be put into place based on the information that we have from MCAS, from the Ahearn, to help ensure that there's not going to be a gap with those students who may need additional resources to, you know, to be where they need to be, to pass that MCAS test?
I think I alluded to it the last time, I think one of the problems we're going to have is determining some sort of cycle to put all that remediation into effect without affecting all the elective courses that we have.
Right.
And I think what the thought process is this summer, is we have a science action plan, and our department will follow, we have action plans pretty much across the board, it's just that we don't have it reflected in the school improvement plan, just because I didn't want to make it, you know, necessarily a book. So the two focal points on math and English, but science is there, they've done preliminary item analysis, and they have a thought process. But again, as an administrator, I'm very concerned about how we're going to implement all of it, and I'm not sure, I have an answer for you on that one.
Okay.
But I will, but some is in.
I just think that someone looking through some of these plans may say, gee, it's clear that science is an area that obviously you have to focus on, and it's not, you know, it's not really written out, it's not spelled out here. So I think that it's important for people at home to understand that, you know, we're working on that behind the scenes. And that, of course, this is a two-year plan, and I would anticipate at the end of the next school year, after the science review is completed, that they will be a part of the school improvement plan. the school improvement plans as we get more data about what we need to do and ensure.
Just as an aside, just the fact that we promoted the SAT piece, by doing that, our electives and, well, a little bit of music, but our, in the tech areas, it went down dramatically because those thirty, forty, fifty kids who opted for SAT now aren't involved in that program. So it's just trying to keep a balance as best we can so that, you know, we're comprehensive under the umbrella. We wanted to have people ready to offer that. So my sense is we'll pull some of those remedial components maybe into an evening piece at some point down the road, I think anyways. But I'll have a more clearance if we're interested in it at some point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just also talking about the SATs, on page eleven, when you talk about encouraging juniors to take the SAT review preparation semester course, you talk about the results being analyzed. How will those be analyzed? Individually, how is that done?
Well, collectively as scores are concerned, individually through the class preparation program, through teaching math strategies, math techniques if you will, to help support those particular areas of the SAT. But the real focus will be on the class itself and identifying student strengths. If they've taken too long on the test, what are some strategies to move them along? Selecting the correct answer, how do you choose between, whether it's A or B, kind of specific SAT strategy. That's why I said the way we'll improve is by getting more kids involved in the program. And so it's a choice that they'll have to make.
We don't get information like we do with the MCAS in terms of using test whiz to dissect MCAS and see where our deficiencies are. We don't, we don't have that kind of data for SATs?
There is some, there is some data that is available. It's, that we actually have been purchasing that's available that disaggregates the data a little bit better than just the flat scores. We're just, it's been going through the guidance counseling, we just need to be working a little bit more closely with it. The teachers have been working with the data. They've seen it. But you don't get the detail that you get from MCAS, no.
So is that something that's going to be more up and running?
It needs to be built, yeah, sure. It needs to be built up.
Any anticipation of when that might be?
Oh, I'm sure that they'll be working on it this coming year.
Jeff, I'd like to, I too would love to have a paperless survey, but I want to thank you for sending it to my home. Because had you not done that, I would not have been able to participate or even have a conversation with my high schooler to say, and that's how I found out that the students were also administered that. If you, if you would, could you, since I, I know I was in the Foxworthy, but I as a parent didn't quite understand the list server and I'd like us to put in a plug.
Sure.
Because another parent explained how parents can get on that list server and I think that's going to be very critical. Would you likewise explain to parents out there how they can very easily click and get on the list server?
Yeah. They can go onto our website and gather that information if they want to sign and be a member of the list server, which will allow them the opportunity to receive emails from the high school. And again, things that I know, SAT dates to remind parents that the SATs are coming up, general information pertaining to the opening of school, you know, the big ticket item. So I don't want people to perceive it as, oh, here goes another spam item from the high school. But again, to make it, you know, meaningful information that we think that all our parents can use. So in order to receive it, they have to sign up with the high school. It's just right there on the webpage. Pretty simple to fill out. And as I've been told, that the numbers are moving up quickly. So that's a good thing.
Do you know offhand how many parents have already signed up?
I don't. I thought, I thought it was a couple, maybe two and three hundred, I thought.
That's a great start. That's a, that's a great start. The only thing, in terms of the extended time on learning, that's once per cycle. So that'd be once every six days?
Seven.
Or seven days, I'm sorry. With, any idea when that might, would that be sometime in two thousand and seven or would that have to wait to oh eight or oh nine?
What our, yeah, what our goal is, is to send some subcommittees out to school systems that have a similar program right now, provide professional development, and then run a Mark schedule sometime around the winter season, fourteen days, to let our teachers go through the process, let the kids go through the process, and then develop some side of that, develop some sort of evaluative tool to look at the results and see what people think about it. I think the big concern seemed to be the transition piece on lesson plans from the teachers' end. You know, with period one class, you're right here, period two, you're at a different point. Setting up the labs was somewhat of a concern. I don't think there's any major roadblock. There were just more little concerns than I anticipated. We had a formed subcommittee, gone through all the departments and thought we were pretty close to at least running the Mark schedule. And then there seemed to be more concerns than I anticipated. So rather than rush it, I just pulled it back and moved forward again this year with it.
So it may not, if moving forward this year, it still may not happen though, be implemented in two oh nine?
I'd say probably oh eight.
So you think it would be for oh eight?
Oh eight, oh nine. I'm sorry, you're right, oh nine, yeah.
And I just wanted to thank you and the school council for doing the recap year end. I noticed that was new from last year. I love the new format, but that really helped to drive, to recap for me what you've been doing. And then it went through, you had nine outstanding academic goals. And just as the AHRN had very concrete, specific, measurable goals, as did our elementary schools. On the six non-academic, again, I just want to applaud you, not just for the climate survey, but the way that you're approaching discipline and how you specifically want to reduce the number of referrals and how you're working with teachers and doing a number of things. Will there be at any time, will you, and I know, thank you also for including the profile and the report card as part of your appendix, because that makes it very comprehensive. At some point, will you take a look at the trend in discipline to say, okay, this is, already is your second year and we have a new assistant principal. I believe the number of referrals from what we've been told has gone down. Will you capture that and do some trending on, on some of the student discipline and some of the other issues that you wrestle with, whether it be attendance or discipline issues?
Sure, sure. I think what we try to do is look at, you know, when you have, this year, I think we're probably going to have more referrals than we had in the past because of two administrators as opposed to one. There's a closer scrutiny of what's going on. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing or means that our, our discipline has gone out of whack. It just means that, you know, we're able to be more vigilant and slow the process down. So what we'll, what we always look at is the type and the nature of the discipline issues and then formulate some sort of plan based on that. So if we see that cutting is a common problem, I tend to probably look at last year's and this year's, but focus more on how to eliminate, how to minimize that particular problem. But I can certainly look across at least the collective information that I've gathered in, you know, next year, over three years. So I'll at least be able to, three years of comparative analysis together. So sure. And I'll share with you.
And like, just as we've reinstated the guidance at the, at the elementary and the AHRN and also the high school, now there will be a new department head. So you'll be giving us periodic updates.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you already have in mind, you and the school council, how you will make that more proactive as we've been able to-
We'll move to develop more of a developmental guidance piece and I'll fill you into the steps along the way, what we've had and what we've changed and modified or added to. So certainly.
I think that's so helpful. And in the fall, I know there's always a lot that we have underway in getting off the new school year, but because we start the budget process so early, I think it'd be very timely to be able to demonstrate to parents and taxpayers what they've gotten by having those services reinstituted. So I don't, I just want to, I think we all share how I believe it's very important. And lastly, I'd just like to put in a plug and a thank you to the teachers at the high school who I've seen more and more, again, teachers using teacher web. And it's phenomenal. It's a great communication tool. It holds accountability to the students. They can't say they didn't take it down or they didn't exist. And it's great if parents also can check and be able to stay and keep current with the, with the curriculum. So I have seen, again, an increase as in the AHRN and also an increase at the high school. And thank you to all the teachers who are embracing that. It's, I think, very important.
Martha?
Jeff, I think this is a very honest and aggressive plan. And I commend you for putting it before us to tell you like it is really, and what we need to do. And I think with everything that you have in place, you're absolutely trying to take us to the next level. And I just want you to know that I can see the hard work that's going into this. One concern I have about the review classes, when we're looking at how many credits they need to graduate from high school, how does that factor in when they can't take electives? Do they actually get credit for the review?
Yeah, it constitutes a election.
So it's a trade, okay. All right. I just wondered how it went. If we can do it all, we'll be reaching a new milestone. Thank you.
How many teachers do you need to accomplish this?
No, I've got a compliment. I appreciate the support. I think we're in, we're in good stead and ready to move forward and continue to move forward. So thank you.
Okay. Why don't we move on to the changes to the Foxborough High School student handbook? I mentioned to Jeff at graduation on Sunday, which went off flawlessly. And Jeff told me it'd be about an hour and fifteen minutes. It was almost exactly an hour and fifteen minutes. It was like clockwork. But I mentioned to him that we have a group of parents that have been following up on the drug and alcohol issues in town. And at our last meeting, the group wanted to recommend to you that in fact, any student who does extracurricular activity in the high school, potentially in the middle school as well, but any student who does extracurricular activity, band, art, music, football, basketball, baseball, anything at all, would be required to attend a mandatory with their parent, one parent, drug and alcohol session. The school does a lot for the students in teaching them about the importance of drug and alcohol and the impact that it has on student, young student brains. But the group of parents talked about how serious the issue is in Foxborough and that we're not able to reach the parents. They don't come to the meeting. It's difficult with their busy schedules. And so one of the ways to help the parents understand how serious this was, the group thought, would be to work with the administration to have a program that would require parents and students to come and listen to the importance of alcohol and drug abuse, understand the consequences within the new discipline and policy, et cetera. Also talked about the importance of having flexible meetings so that parents who might work days or might work nights or may work at odd hours are still able to come. But the feeling is that if we don't reach out to the community and get the parents involved just as much as the students, we're not going to have, we're not going to make the kind of progress. And there were several other school committee members there that evening. So they can certainly add their two cents of work to that. But I wanted to gauge your reaction to that as you're looking at your student handbook and your thoughts about requiring a parent with every student an extracurricular activity to sit through a one or two-hour program on drug and alcohol abuse.
I think my, after we had our discussion, a couple of points, and then we had a subsequent follow-up discussion with our school council. And based on that conversation, I think what we would like to do again is to reach out in the fall, in the winter, in the spring with two types of programs. And one would be for the athletes to listen to the expectations of the coach, potentially bring in that motivational speaker to talk about, you know, the pluses and minuses associated with drugs and alcohol use. And then to follow it up with an activities meeting as well, where anyone involved in clubs, et cetera, would have the ability to, would have the ability to be involved in those meetings. So I think, again, from an awareness piece, the coaches could follow up with a number of parents that might not have shown up and set up an alternative meeting for them. Again, I see it more as informational to begin with.
Right.
Not necessarily a heavy alcohol, drug presentation, but awareness of the negatives that are associated with it. And I haven't formulated the program, but a program I think would be beneficial. Does a couple of things. With a new athletic director, it would allow the public to meet the new athletic director and for him to set the parameters of his expectations. And then the flip side, when you meet with the various bands, musics, et cetera, you also have the ability to meet those people on a more personal basis. I don't know if I'd mandate it, because I think there might be a difficult thing to start with. When we talked, one of the things I got real concerned about was, we're going to, we're going to struggle a little bit with that athlete who doesn't understand, no matter how many kinds you tell them, that if you do something foolish in the fall, it has a twenty-five percent effect wherever you start. And then if you do it a second time, it has a sixty percent effect as well. I just, I just know that no matter how many kinds we say it, it still, it doesn't, it doesn't hit home collectively. So I guess my point is I'd like to have a gradual paradigm shift so that as each year goes by, the kids know more and more what the expectations are. So I think that having a meeting for our parents to meet with the coaches, for our parents to meet with the club advisorships is a good idea. And I certainly wouldn't be opposed to it and would like to. Mandating it might be a little strong, but I think there's ways around mandating that we can still get the majority of people there and get the intended effect that we want.
I think one of the concerns is the parent who says, but my child is going to get a scholarship, you can't take him out of the program. And so we really need to make sure that the parents understand the seriousness of the issue, the collective support on the part of the school committee to move this forward, and the fact that they're going to have consequences as a parent if their child gets into issues and it affects their college entrance or their college scholarships. So that's why the parents kind of talked about, how do we, we do this as a community? We do it between parents and students. It's not just athletes, it's band, it's art, it's, it's all the extracurricular activity, it's debate club.
Sure.
It's just trying to make sure that all the young children, all the young students in the school understand the importance of this issue. We've had too many stories in the newspaper, there've been too many stories in other communities. We don't want to lose a student in this community over, over our lack of education or lack of effort or lack of outreach to the parents. So I don't think that the group, the group is just suggesting to you that you and your team strongly consider how you can take that and take it to the next step and however that works for you and the administration.
I think the only difference is we had planned to have a three-season meeting for athletics anyway. That was a given. Now it's just a matter of adding that other component so, to create that awareness. So I don't see that being a problem.
Martha, you had a question?
You know, we've, we've come up with a prom contract. Maybe it's time we think about an athletic and an extracurricular contract where it is spelled out explicitly what the ramifications are if you do something wrong.
In fact, Larry, that's actually what the group discussed prior to mandating training. It was using the indemnity contract. And I believe the parent had volunteered to speak with Dr. Morgan to add that.
I think we're at this, I think we're at this point.
To do just that, yeah.
No matter what it is, that way nobody can come back and say, well, I didn't know or I wasn't sure, I didn't know what it contained to this. It's, you have to put it in black and white. And I think we've arrived.
I think so too. And I think that, given the showing that there was for the prom contract, if the student and a parent want their, if a parent wants the student and if the student wants to be there doing whatever the activity is, they will be there. And again, making it available at different times to meet the needs of the parents and their, you know, work schedule, it will, it's, it's something new right now. So it feels like, oh, it's going to be an additional burden almost placed if we're mandating it, so to speak. But I think it's like anything new. If we adopt it, if we feel that this is something that we want to really be part of what we're trying to set as a policy, then I think over time it will become easier.
That might, that might be ultimately the cleaner way, that I have no problem putting that into, you know, the packet we sent home to put a contract in there for activities and athletics that is what your child is abiding by in this process.
Because we sign, we sign for the student handbooks, both at the AHRN and the, and the high school. And the indemnity, just as we give our permission to participate in after-school activities, there's also, the onus then becomes on parents. It's another reminder that this is, this is, we want to keep our, our schools free of alcohol and drugs. So I think it's across the board. It's very fair. As for mandating training, I think that might be something in the future. I wouldn't want to see it now because I do think it takes away from time on learning. I think we're going to discuss in a moment the new discipline procedures, which gives you as principals some discretion, which I think is very appropriate. You mentioned the paradigm shift. We've gone from literally moving from use of alcohol and drugs during the school day to more of an alcohol and drug free. We are not at zero tolerance. So I think, though, in the next year, we will be further along in that point. I think you would have at your discretion, we have a computerized training that will be expanded to the ninth grade. The tenth, eleventh, and twelfth currently get that. If you feel it's necessary to really make sure both the student and the parent has some accountability, that's a computerized training that you would have at your discretion to, in essence, require. You know, if you're talking, depending on the extent of the first offense or a second offense, that's another tool then you would have at your disposal for, to handle that situation. So I- situation. So I don't think we need to mandate training per se, but I do like the idea of, again, the indemnity agreement, which, which mentions the alcohol and drug.
You also talked about that this summer, you're going to be reviewing the wellness curriculum. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that is another place where we can look at how drug and alcohol education can fit into, maybe more extensively than we have right now, into our program. And I know that's going to affect the time on learning. But again, I mean, I think you're hearing from the committee that it's something we feel very strongly about, and I'm just wondering if that's another avenue to look at this summer.
Sure, sure. I think there's, I don't think you can ever do enough reinforcement of best practices, if you will. It's just a matter of what we can do and do well and do consistently. And so, I think that's what we will ultimately look to do. I think the contract is a good idea. I also think, like I said, the meeting with parents preseason for athletes and preseason one time for our activities is a good thing, too, because they need to hear. And, you know, I think it's another connection. It's another way to reach out to the parents. So that's fine.
Questions, continue, other questions from Jeff on student handbook changes that he's proposed in the document that we have? Martha?
No.
Debbie?
No.
These are good.
Katie?
Just for clarification, and I know we've talked about it.
Don't worry about it, Katie. I've got a couple for Jeff, too.
Keep, watch for eye on the clock there. We talked about whether this includes off-school grounds. It does not, correct, at this point in time? This includes just on school-related activities, school grounds? It does not include, you know, if it happens on the weekend and it's not related to school?
Only if there's potential felony charges associated with it. Then it would, it would kick a different mechanism into place, because based on a felony charge, we have the right to exclude. But, I'll leave it at that.
Anything else, Katie?
No.
Katie?
And I know you do a very good job with assemblies, but just so that I'm clear. How will you let the students know? Will there be assemblies beginning of the school year so that as you're moving forward, communicating the alcohol and drug policies to all students? Will you incorporate that into assemblies?
Yeah, but I'll incorporate it into an evening assembly, where I think we'll get the best participation.
But that would be for parents. How would you do that for students?
No, for kids, too. It would be parents and students.
Students, for the evening. So that will be, that will be definite?
That'll be definite, yeah.
Okay. And the other question I had on the leaving, I'm sorry, the alcohol possession, page 36, it says we're inserting this new paragraph. Okay. Does that mean that we're taking out the note about not being able to attend dances in junior prom, or will that still be included?
You're just inserting that, just a minute.
I don't think any of that changes. I still think it becomes, you know, a value to it based on the student's performance. You know, you can make a mistake. It's a matter of how many mistakes you make before. We don't think you should represent us at dances and functions, activities, et cetera.
Okay. So the new paragraph, which I think is excellent, that goes in. And then there'll be a second note that says, any student who violates this section of the Code of Student Conduct will not be permitted to attend school dances, including the junior prom.
Correct.
Should that say extra, other extracurricular activities? Are we now saying that, or are we just saying you can't attend the dancer, a dance or the junior prom?
No, we're saying dances and the prom.
Okay. So basically, we're saying if it happens when you're a freshman, you cannot attend the sophomore dance.
Right. Subject, subject to appeal. And I'll tell you flatly that I'm not going to hold a person who did something foolish their freshman year, three years down the road. So I think that was the idea of the disclaimer between the first and second offense piece, that as far as the alcohol was concerned, carries the right to lose your privileges.
Okay.
I think, I think this clause does the same thing, that you reserve the right that you may not be able to go to, you will not be permitted to attend school dances. That holds firm. But they have the right to appeal that. So getting it clear, that if I put in this student has a right to appeal, we can certainly do that.
I thought it was very clear of the way you first included it.
Okay.
But then I, the old section had about school dances and prom, and that's what led to my confusion. You know, you were saying you're going to have both of those. That's fine. That's fine. My questions are answered.
We need a motion to approve this tonight, Dr. Norton?
Yes.
Can I come up?
I'll second that.
Motion by Martha. Second by Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. The next item on the agenda is the new facilities project update. Mr. O'Leary?
Just to give you a quick update on the projects we have planned for the summer, besides our normal routine cleaning, just to give you some idea, we're going to use about 750 gallons of wax this summer in our buildings, believe it or not. But the other projects, high school bleachers, remove the boards, plane and finish the boards, repaint the decks, install stairs and safety rails. That project's already started. They were here last Wednesday. All the boards right now are currently in New York being planed. So that should be completed within the next three weeks, I'm hoping. Curving at the high school, install granite curving, new sidewalk, six handicap ramps, put the finish coat on the paving. That will start shortly after July 4th. I've been assured that it will be completed well before Labor Day. Actually, in the next rainy day, you'll probably see granite curving being delivered. And then again, they'll start right after the 4th. At the IGO, we're going to remove the rug, abate all the floor tile in 15 classrooms, six offices, two storage rooms, and then we're going to reinstall new tile and rug. That's scheduled to start a week from today. That will take probably about a month to complete. Also, at the IGO, we're going to, if you notice in the main office, there's a center wall that divides the two secretaries, and it just, it doesn't flow well and so on. We're going to remove that wall. We're going to install our reception counter, similar to the one that we've installed at the Taylor School. And then we're also going to cut in a view window into the corridor, so the secretaries have a view of the corridor or anyone going by who should get by if the door is left open. It's just an added security measure, so they know exactly what's going on out there. The Borough School, we've been talking about this for many, many years. We're going to tint all the windows in the cafeteria in the summer, in the fall, spring, and in the summer. The sun shines in the air. It's very, very bright, and it also gets very, very warm in there. That's going to be done this Friday. And we're going to install some sound-absorbing panels in the cafeteria. We did it at the Taylor. We did it in the music rooms and so on. If you've ever been in that cafeteria at lunchtime, it just echoes and reverberates. We're going to try putting some sound-absorbing panels to deaden the sound. I have no start date on that. We're going to do that in-house, and we'll do it as time permits. And last but not least, the Taylor, should funds be appropriated, we're going to prep the lower area for the installation of new playground equipment, install landscape timbers, et cetera, remove all the old equipment, loom, and so on. While on the subject of playgrounds, there was some concern voiced by one of the school committee members about the amount of money that we're requesting for the playground at the Taylor School. I would just like to bring the committee up to date on expenditures over the last few years that we spent on playgrounds. The Borough School, two years ago, I was approached by the PTO. There was an old tennis court that was in the lower field there, which was installed by the PTO back in the early 70s. And the idea was they had a berm around it, and they were going to flood it and ice skate and so on. And that was good for about a year, year and a half, till the first crack developed. And then it pretty much went away. Nobody played tennis there. We had tennis courts uptown, so they put in some basketball courts. And then the thing just eventually deteriorated. So the PTO asked if I would assess it, look at it, and give them some recommendations on how they could upgrade it. So I asked Bob Swanson from the Highway Department of Cornell, look at it with me. And when we looked at it, some of the cracks were at least two inches wide. We had rocks coming up through the pavement. He said, you know, it's a lost cause. But I brought in two companies. They told us the same thing. Don't throw good money after bad. But he said, I'll tell you what, for $36,000, I could put a Band-Aid on it. You can get maybe two, three years out of it. Another company came in, they were up around $56,000. So we recommended to the PTO, the best thing to do is get rid of it. Tear it up, regrade the area, loom it and seed it. And now you've got a flat area for the kids to play soccer and football, because they were playing on the side of a hill before. So the school committee did appropriate the funds. The other problem that existed there was the back parking lot had no berm, no catch basin, and the water used to flow down and erode the hill going down into that area. In fact, there used to be a jungle gym there, and it kept eroding the sand until the concrete piers were exposed. And so, as a safety measure, we actually ripped out the jungle gym, along with another one in the back that they really didn't use and was deteriorating. So we installed a catch basin with drain lines, a berm to capture all the water into the catch basin to alleviate that eroding process. We ripped up the tennis court, the fencing and so on, disposed of it, brought in well over 300 tons of loom, regraded the area and seeded. That came to about $30,000. Then, just this year, the PTO there raised some funds to buy additional equipment. So they bought a rock climbing wall to be installed in the lower area that we repaired. When we eliminated the erosion, they found an ice area for the rock climbing wall. The school department paid for the landscape timbers and for the mulch, and we, along with the parents, actually installed it. And that cost was about $2,900. So to date, in the last couple of years, we spent about $32,500 at the Borough School. The IGO, being a newer playground, which two of them were put in when the building was rehabbed. We have the kindergarten playground out in the front of the building, and then on the side, we have the elementary school playground. Those, that equipment was put in in the mid-'90s, pretty much up to date. In the last two years, we remulched the playground, the kindergarten playground, out in the front, buying the mulch, having it installed, fork it over the fence and so on. We spent about $2,400. The playground at the IGO, the problem that existed there was, first, it's on a hill, adjacent to a hill near the softball field. And every time we had torrential rains, the sand would end up in the softball field. Highway Department would be good. They'd come out with the equipment. We'd pick it all up, bring it back, respread it. And it was just creating a problem every time we had torrential rains. So we said we have to alleviate this problem. Second problem was, it was a sand finish that the kids were playing on. In the fall, the bees would make nests in the sand. Because of the IPM program and so on, we couldn't spray. And you actually had to know where the nest was to make it effective anyways. So we would actually almost shut the playground down until we had the first frost, and then the kids could go up and use it again. So it was decided, let's get rid of the sand. So last year, we brought in equipment, removed all of the sand, built a retaining wall along that hill to prevent the washdown. And then we brought in 180 yards of mulch for the playground. And that cost came to $9,800. And then this year, we've just priced a pass. I guess the request was made that they were afraid the kids could sneak out the back through the trees towards St. Mary's Church and so on, and they requested it'd be nice to have a fence. So we outpriced a good fence, and that's going to be an additional $2,200. So, you know, we'll have expended about $12,000 at the IGO school in the last two years. The Taylor School, in the last two years, I've expended probably $50. One, to replace a swing seat, and two pieces of chain on one of the swings. That playground, the swings were put in, I believe, when the school was built in the '60s. So those are the original swings. The playground up on the hill with the tires and the timbers and railroad ties and telephone poles, just looking at it, I think it's late '70s vintage that parents put in. At the time, it was state-of-the-art. It was wonderful. Right now, that playground, you can't put one in similar to that. It would be illegal. Secondly, the surface underneath is stone, because it's built on the side of a hill. So the Borough, the Taylor School has the original equipment, plus that up on the hill. So the request now was to bring the Taylor School up to where the Borough and the IGO are presently now. So I think Mr. Jackson and I met with Bruce Gardner, who is the playground committee chairman. And to date, they've raised $19,000. He believes by the time construction starts, he'll have more. So he has gone out, we said, you know, because the school department is, will contribute possibly some funds, we have to get three prices. You know, he could pick, as a PTO, he could go out, pick a vendor and just buy the equipment. We don't have that luxury. So right now, there's an RFP out for the equipment. They will review it, compare prices, and give us their recommendation. So this summer, actually, very quickly, we would like authorization to rip out the older swings and the jungle gym. And the reason those have to come out, because the playground is going to go in there, and the playground layout, there is a code that there has to be so many feet between each piece of equipment and the layout configuration. And the way the swings and the jungle gym are now, there's no way we can fit new equipment in. Again, and they're, they're over 40 years old to begin with. So we would like to eliminate that equipment, dig out the loom in the sand that's presently there, install the landscape timbers, so as the company can come in, install their piece of equipment. And then, when they're done, we will install about 180 yards of playground mulch. So that brings us up to date. Any questions?
We'll be voting later this evening on authorization for that, but I think that's important. If somebody was concerned about whether we were treating all the schools equally, that's, that's very helpful, I think, for the public to see, that it's Taylor's turn.
Any questions?
Questions from the committee, from Mike? Mike, I'd like you to come back in August and give us an update at the August meeting on how we're doing with all these products over the summer.
I hope they're done.
Before you, before you step away, Martha, any questions?
No. The other thing is, this is a safety issue. It needs to be addressed. So we really need to move on this. We can't. Okay, Mike?
Kate?
No, thank you, Mike. With you on Project Point, we can have complete confidence. Thank you for all your hard work. And thank you for helping us to ensure equity, because that's exactly what we're doing here. It's across all elementary schools. Thank you. Echo?
Debbie?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the EQA report. Paul, do you want to, what, EQA stands for Educational Quality and Accountability. And I have a 10-minute presentation that I'd like to make, summarizing to the public of the draft results. Dr. Norton has received a 147-page draft report. And since she is not going to be here when that report is finalized, I wanted to at least spend this evening sharing with the committee the overview of those results. I'd like to hold the questions until I finish going through the presentation. I sent each of the school committee members a memo that summarized it, but so the people at home will be able to see it. We put a PowerPoint together so that they can follow along with the dialogue. The, the state came out to audit us. They use educational folks who are experts in education. And the period that they audited is the school years 2005 and 2006. So I want to make it clear that this was not an audit of Dr. Norton's school year. It was the two years prior to that. And I guess I have the drive here. Okay, let me start by giving a quick overview. When the state came out to audit, there are six categories that they look at and 67 subcategories as well. The first category is leadership, governance, and communication. The second is curriculum and instruction. The third is assessment and program evaluation, human resource management and professional development, access, participation, and student academic support, and financial and asset management effectiveness. Now, when they look at each one of these subcategories and categories, they come up with a rating. with a rating. You can receive a rating of excellent, satisfactory, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. In the Foxborough case, our leadership characteristic was rated as needs improvement. All of the categories received a satisfactory rating. Of the 67 subcategories, we received a satisfactory rating in 40 of those, and in 25, we received a needs improvement, nine of which were in leadership, and two unsatisfactory, both in leadership. So 40% of the categories that they reviewed, they rated Foxborough as either needs improvement or unsatisfactory. And just a quick overview, and I'll go into this in a few minutes, what led them to those conclusions. Foxborough lacked strategic or district improvement plans, district safety and crisis management plans. There were no measurable goals related to student achievement for the superintendent, for principals or teachers in order to raise student achievement. There were a lack of policies across the district, ineffective employee evaluations, ineffective budgeting process, and lack of analysis of key data such as absenteeism. They did state though in this report that despite the ineffective leadership and the poor morale that was cited to them by employees of the school district, teachers soldiered on and student achievement remained solid. In fact, Foxborough is a, was rated as high performing, although our performance was flat. Our average proficiency rating was an 86, English was 92, math was 79. That is substantially above the state average. Two-thirds of our students scored at or above proficiency standards in 2006. The problem the report points out is that because of the leadership issues, we were stagnant, we were not growing, our scores were not getting better. And so while we are a high-performing district, that was flat. Now to give you some flavor for the specific findings, the district lacks strategic leadership to drive strategy and policy, because there were no strategic improvement plans, district improvement plans or measurable goals related to student achievement. In fact, they cited the last district strategic plan expired at the time that the former superintendent was hired, and she never renewed that strategic plan. School improvement plans existed, but only the middle school was standard-based and connected to student achievement. What they said was, the SIPs lacked direction, were not standards-based, were reflective, not proactive, and didn't follow educational reform protocol. Neither the school committee nor the superintendent used student achievement data to evaluate the performance of the superintendent or the principals, nor did they assess the effectiveness of administrative leadership to raise student achievement. One of the drivers of this audit from the state is how are we as a community, or any community they're auditing, raising student achievement? And so the strategic plans, the district improvement plans, everything is to be geared towards raising student achievement, and if you don't have measures, how do you know if you're making any progress? The district lacked written guidelines and policies. It said in the report specifically, the district relied on practices and procedures without written guidelines and policies for many areas of administration. There were no district safety and crisis management plans that were coordinated with the police and fire departments or aligned with the school plans. However, they did note that all schools had safety and crisis management plans themselves. There were no finance policies outlining guidelines and procedures for running the financial business of the district. The district's accounting system uses Excel spreadsheets, it lacks efficiency and appropriate data analysis capability, and prevented the district from providing timely financial reports to the school committee. The superintendent and the business manager, and this is not reflective on our current business manager, developed budgets with limited input from administrators. In fact, what they commented on is that the budgets were based on guidelines given by the selectmen, which mandated level funding, and therefore, little time was spent on the budget process. Neither the superintendent nor the former business manager allocated budget based on student achievement data. In fact, they say ELA proficiency rate on MCAS tests in one elementary school lagged behind the other two by 15 percentage points, yet the district did not allocate additional resources to close that gap. This former superintendent, former business manager did not always provide the school committee with sufficient time to review financial matters or the budget. The school committee did not evaluate the superintendent based on student achievement or the attainment of district improvement goals, because obviously, there were no district improvement goals. The superintendent wrote her own goals and reported her accomplishments in a written statement to the school committee, which then became the basis from which the school committee evaluated the superintendent. A review of 19 administrative personnel files showed only half with the required evaluations. Of those that were evaluated, they were not instructive, they lacked recommendations for improvement, they did not follow the principles of effective administrative leadership as dictated by the state, they lacked measurable goals linked to student achievement. I will say, the report did note that while they did not follow principles of effective leadership, they did follow a hybrid method, which was narrative and included some components of what the state requires. The district did not hold teachers accountable for student achievement. It says in the report, the superintendent delegated the educational and operational leadership to principals and program directors, but did not use student achievement data in any systematic way to gauge the success of teachers or administrators. Principals conducted regular and detailed classroom evaluations, but protocols for informal walkthrough were not standardized. And while teacher evaluations were performed, most did not include recommendations for improvement, although the teachers said that evaluations did provide verbal feedback. EQA folks set in classrooms and actually observed teachers, and they were looking for principles of effective teaching. In classroom management, they rated our teachers a 96%, in instruction practice, a 78%, in expectations, an 80%, in positive student activity, a 76%, and in climate, an 87%. So generally Bs and Cs with an A in classroom management. The district analyzed and used student assessment data to align curriculum and develop additional programs. However, it did not use the assessment data to monitor effectiveness. Math was not aligned with curriculum frameworks, although the district addressed this through compacting units and supplemental materials, and protocols for walkthrough and lesson planned formats were inconsistent. Although the district analyzed and used data from standardized tests and classroom assessments, impediments prevented an optimum analysis and use of data to improve student achievement. And they cited some examples. Vague leadership positions delayed analysis and implementation of improvement strategies. And they talked about the amount of turnover in the district and how long it took to replace people. Classroom teachers did not fully use student achievement data to inform instruction and set student goals. And without a DIP or standards-based school improvement plans, achievement data to measure educational progress and modify curriculum and instruction was fragmented. The high school did not meet the Department of Education requirements of 990 hours of instructional time, because it placed some students in directed study classes with no Excessive absences at the high school led to a loss of course credit. The schools did not conduct systematic disaggregated analysis of student attendance data and were unaware of subgroup anomalies or patterns of chronic absenteeism. A review of Department of Education attendance data showed spikes in chronic absenteeism or missing at least 18 days of school at grades 6, 7, 11 and 12, and 13.2% of students in grades 6 through 12, according to the state, were chronically absent in 2005 and 2006. Finally, the school committee lacked a systematic method of reviewing and updating policies. And many of the policies were outdated or non-compliant, nonexistent or non-compliant with the Education Reform Act. Now, I took all of this verbatim right out of the report without any editorial comments, so that you would see out of this close to 200-page document, a couple of things that I would like to share. First of all, these documents tend to be more negative than positive, in the sense that they're pointing out where your weaknesses are and what you need to do to improve. Although there are, as I indicated through here, parts of things where they do mention very positive results, such as us being a high-performance district. I would like to make two editorial comments, though. The review is done by experts in education. It clearly states the relationship between improving student test scores with leadership, setting strategy, developing measurable plans and holding people accountable for achievement. All areas they felt were lacking in the period under audit, in my opinion, long before that as well. I agree with the experts that these weaknesses probably contribute to our flat student achievement, and can only imagine what our students could have achieved with the proper leadership. That said, I want to recognize Dr. Norton as acting superintendent and her administrative team, who stepped up in the last year to provide leadership and have started to address all of those gaps. We can honor Dr. Norton by working to make further improvements under Dr. Martis, so that when she looks back in a year or two at Foxborough, she can see the progress that we've made, and the progress that she started, we can follow through on. Second, most of the issues in this report are really not a surprise to very many people. I think that's because people like Martha and Beverly have been outspoken on many of these issues for many years. And citizens like Mr. and Mrs. Navado and Mr. Ballin, as well as others, have brought these weaknesses to the public's attention many, many times. At times, these folks endure ridicule, but have the courage to remain active, to raise questions about policy or process, and have the patience to persist in their criticism. I think we grow most when we have the wisdom to listen to our critics. I hope people will continue to provide criticism when they feel it is appropriate, and that we will act as quickly as possible to address that criticism. Now I will open comments to the rest of the school committee and then the public on the EQA preliminary results.
Katie, do you want to go first? That was a resounding yes.
Larry, would it be appropriate for me to talk?
You want to go through your responses first?
So that you can see what we have done to address some of these things before you talk about the EQA report?
Can we just pass that to Jan, please?
Can we? We've now had a copy of this, we had your email. I'd like to have.
Right over there, there was a copy.
No. Hold it for.
The 144-page, 170 pages, no.
No, your PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint's right there. That's correct. We just took, we just took the letter and made it PowerPoint, that's all.
It's the information we have.
Jan, are you putting something up over there?
Yep.
Jan is putting up.
There's a PowerPoint.
Her PowerPoint here, which people in the audience can get right over there on the side, so they can follow her as well as.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes, it's in our package.
It's in our package.
I'm going to take one, two together. Oh, wait. Or Kate, we can.
Yeah, we just got this. Go ahead, Doc, do it.
Well, I'm waiting for Kate to come back.
Okay.
It's going to go back over there.
Oh, thanks, yeah, thanks. It's me.
Anything else?
It is better.
Martha, can you read that? The PowerPoint. The big pages tomorrow.
Oh. You do? I can read this, thank you. I'll probably look up there.
I am, I am not going to directly respond to the EQA report, first of all, because it is not the final report. As Mr. Harrington pointed out, there are 147 pages. I have read every single word of it and responded to the report, both in writing and several phone calls to Mr. Joe Raffa, who's in charge of the program. The first thing I want to say that's very important is when this, when this report is put up, and it will be put up on the EQA website, when it is put up on the website, it is important for you to read every word of it. My aggravation with it, and it is the aggravation of several other superintendents, is that it tends towards sensationalism, in that it makes very big, bold statements that says administrators were not evaluated. That might be on page one, yet on page 133, as Mr. Harrington pointed out to you, it will say, from a select group of folders that were taken, this is what occurred. So over and over again, in this report, you're going to see some sensational statements, and it's very important that if you read it, don't get excited till you read the entire report. So please, I caution you on that. You're going to think, oh my goodness, the sky is falling, the sky is falling, until you read the entire report. The other thing that I wanted to point out to everyone is that, just pulled it to it, is that we are a high-performing school, that the debriefing after EQA came, and they talked to me, they said, wow, your students are happy, they're healthy, there's a lot of good teaching going on, students are performing well. So even though we didn't have written documents, a lot of good teaching was occurring, a lot of good leadership was occurring. But if, if you're an auditor, it's very difficult, especially if you're not talking about auditing now, and you're auditing the past, the only thing that you have are documents, and the documents are missing. So over and over again, you're going to see in this report, a document is missing, the document is missing. But at the same time, please weigh it with high performance for our students. There are some other things besides the strategic plan and the DIP that we weren't adhering to for any number of reasons, and that I'll go over in just a second. This report also aggravates me, and I have made a point of talking to Joe Rapp about this, because this is the report that's going to go up on the website that says, this is what Foxborough is. And guess what, folks? It's not what Foxborough is anymore. As what Mr. Harrington just pointed out, it's what has happened in the past, two and three years back, not this year. So in a minute, I'm going to go over some of the things, the documents, some of the things that we have done, accomplished this year, so that the rating would be very different if it occurred for right now. But this process does not give us the opportunity to go on that website and say, this is what we have done to address it. I'm disturbed by the process. I have let Mr. Rapp know I am disturbed by the process. To have a report online for people to say, this is what Foxborough is, with no opportunity to refute it, and say, here's how we have addressed it, I think is, quite frankly, inappropriate. I made a note while, while Mr. Harrington was speaking, and did an excellent job, by the way, taking 147 pages and drawing it down. Just one other thing, there was a whole area in there that he was discussing about the chronic absenteeism. Do take a look at it. They, they call it chronic absenteeism, but understand that we had better attendance than anyplace else than, than the state average. So do we want the children to come to school? Yes, because we can't teach them if they're not here. And do we need to do something about it? Absolutely, we need to do something about it, and I'm confident that all of the principals will. Tonight's presentation, I thought that, instead of hitting each individual piece, because a lot of the things that we did are big, and the big things address so many of the issues that you'll see throughout the EQA report when it is finally published. Again, I refuted, I think, four pages, single space, line by line, that I sent in. What's going to be changed, I don't know. So I'm, I'm not going to address it that way, but I thought we, I could talk to you about some of the things that we did accomplish this year. If it is difficult to read this slide at home, Mr. Jackson pointed out, I should have changed the colors, but the colors are the colors of Superman. And I have to tell you, it's a blue background with red and yellow, and I have to tell you, that's how I feel about the administrative team this year. Remembering that we had a huge turnover in September and went very smoothly. We replaced the assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum, the most important, if you think about what are schools for, is for teaching students the curriculum, and we replaced that with .5. Yet we accomplished so much, so we were in Superman colors tonight. Because curriculum is so important, I put it up first, and it all... For any number of reasons, the curriculum cycle went away. I can't speak to all of it. Sometimes that occurs when there's a budget crunch. So you're saying we can't afford new textbooks, so we're not going to do a review. But what happens is you get behind, 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 behind. And as we've been talking about through this entire year, last year, we did an ELA review. The school council found the money for a new program. The teachers are elated with it. I'm very pleased with the instruction that has been occurring in English Language Arts this year. I'm very happy with the program. I anticipate that it will make a difference, if not immediately this year, although I think there's going to be a nudge this year, certainly over the three years that you can expect with a new program. The curriculum cycle, again, this year, we did mathematics for K6. We ended up adopting a new program for K5 that you can feel confident about, that has materials in it that the students need to learn, and the instruction is up to date. It's the newest way, or the best way, to instruct our students. It's based a lot on brain theory. We'll also be doing, next year, we'll be doing, or excuse me, the summer, we'll also be doing the health and wellness, as the committee just pointed out. Next year, you'll be doing the 612 review for mathematics, as well as, as it should be, the K-12 science. So always keeping everything up to date. Because it is a cycle, it doesn't mean you do it one year and then you don't do it again for another eight years. It means that there's another piece along the way. So that committee was extremely important. This committee adopted a strategic plan in January. The strategic plan itself, as many of you disappointedly discovered, was just kind of an overview of what was the process, what are the things that we believe, our core values, our mission statement, our vision statement, what are the plans for putting together a district improvement plan, and what is the relationship of the district improvement plan with the school improvement plans, and then it also contains many of the recommendations of the community. The district improvement plan was just recently adopted. It is under the same outline that the committee recommended, and that is following the four core values. This was important in order for you to have the school improvement plans, and as you saw throughout the EQA, it kept saying, "Where are the measurable goals? How do you hold the principals responsible? How do you hold the superintendent responsible? How do you hold the teachers responsible?" And that is establishing those goals that are measurable so that they can keep coming back and saying, "Well, how did we do? And how did we do?" It's not an off-of-the-head sort of a thing, but it's making sure that we remain focused. From the district improvement plan, we have the SIPS, big difference from the past. In the past, we have written SIPS that have said, "This is what we did last year," rather than projecting into the future. They did not have measurable goals. They very definitely do now. I think some of them still need a little bit of tweaking. I know Dr. Martis will be working with the principals on those. Definitely a huge drive forward. You see how comfortable the principals are with the school improvement plans, and that's because we've been discussing it all year long. Because we had all of those .5 shifts, we needed a little help with professional development. That used to be the responsibility of the assistant superintendent. Ms. McCarthy stepped forward and said that she would take over professional development. She did a wonderful job this year, and the committee has already aligned the professional development to the district improvement plan. That, again, is a big step, instead of sitting around and saying, "What are all the different things that we want to do?" In the last two years, it's been based on the data, on the testing data, but this is, again, more focused on the specific goals for the year. We've implemented the English Language Arts program. I included a bullet here for aligning the implementation of the ELA program. Again, it's a cycle, so it wasn't just a case that we bought a new program, which started in September, we taught the teachers how to use it, but the teachers have already come back again with the director and said, "Here's what we like, here are the assessments that we suggest that we use going forward." They've realigned some of the instructions, some of the books that they are using, some of the elective pieces, some of the different writing pieces, and then this summer, they'll be writing the curriculum from that. We had a very successful 712 English review. We expect that they will be working in their curriculum. The same is true for the K5 math review. They'll be mapping and getting ready for the fall. In June, the 4th, 5th, and 6th, I believe, all of the grade-level teachers got together with Harcourt, which is where Think Math comes from, and have already received their teacher's book so they can go home, stick it under their pillow, maybe they'll use it, learn it by osmosis. But most of the teachers are very excited about it. They're already getting comfortable with it. It's a very similar format to the reading program that they have. I've not heard anybody say, "Oh, no, what did you do?" Last fall, I had a lot of people saying, "Jan, don't buy a new math program. Oh, my gosh, that's English and math one right on top of the other." You have fabulous teachers in Foxborough. They have risen to the challenge, they're excited about it, couldn't wait for those new materials, so hats off to all of, especially elementary teachers. Why might not change it, Paul? We have developed a K8 benchmarks in all subjects. Those are lists. Parents are going to get those at Open House in the fall, and it's going to say, here's a nice little trifold, "This is what your child's going to wear in this year." It's new for Foxborough. Worked very hard on that. That was under the direction of Dr. Allardy and the directors. I do need to tell you, Dr. Allardy is not here tonight because she has her priorities in order. Tonight is her daughter's birthday party, so I told her she couldn't come tonight. So hats off to Dr. Allardy for being smart and staying home with her child. We began the math 712, English, health, and wellness curricular realignment, and that will be occurring this summer. And thanks to the school committee with the additional math teacher at the high school, we will now have an engineering course in the fall of 2007, and that curriculum will also be written this summer. The administration, what are the things that we did specifically as administrators? We provided a very smooth transition. It's very difficult. We had a superintendent that was here for eight years who left abruptly in September, and we just moved right on into it, and things kept going. Hats off to the teachers, hats off to the principals who just kept it rolling. Those administrators stepped up and accepted some .5 positions, so that Dr. Allardy became the .5 assistant superintendent, Ms. Saltzman became .5 principal at the IGO, and then we moved up Mr. Keller from a .5 assistant principal to a 1-0 assistant principal at the Ahern. As I pointed out, a lot of other people filled in positions. Ms. McCarthy filled in for professional development. Sue Abrams is here in the audience, and I have to giggle because she just kept watching her assistants coming and going, and she filled in as people kept going back and forth. Ms. Bernelli added to her list of people that she evaluated. Everybody stepped forward, and it's a phenomenal team. We provided interview and hiring practices workshops for our administrators and department heads. We brought in lawyers who talked about things to say, how to interview properly. We provide supervision evaluation training. We aligned the administrator evaluation tool. I have taken the effective leadership guidelines provided on the Department of Education website. There are five big guidelines. We set, the administrators set goals as they did last year. They have met with me this spring. This year, I changed the template to specifically those five areas. It's all in the narrative, and then Dr. Martis, I'm certain, will be working on it again next year, but we are definitely in compliance with EQA and the things that they were asking for. And we sent three administrators to the Center for, three more administrators to the Center for Creative Leadership. We found that it has had a good, a very good impact on our administrators, focusing on what's important, setting up the priorities, learning some things about interacting with the community, et cetera. Budget process, what we budgeted earlier. I can't tell you how many superintendent meetings I have gone to, and everybody, "Woe is me," and Dr. Martis is in the back. How many meetings did Dr. Martis, did you have, I mean, night after night after night, working on the budget this past spring, working with the school committee? Because we started early, because Paul was so effective in providing very detailed information upfront, we went to the AdCom, the advisory council, one time, one night, for a very short period of time. All of you were so well-educated in the budget because the principals came and explained to you the importance of the items they were asking for, and that was new this year. We had so many meetings, so much exchange, that the budget process moved very, very quickly through. Not only do I commend the school committee and the administrators, but thanks to the town. Isn't it neat to sit here and say, "We're going to fix that playground because it's not a safe place, because we've been giving some thought to it and we have the money where it needs to be?" We evaluated FTEs so that we have an idea, a better idea of when people retire, what kind of impact that change in their salaries is going to have, and Paul's done an excellent job of projecting bus fuel, heat, light, and out-of-district placement costs, again, so that we can be planning better. District-wide, one of the things we rushed to have Dr. Allardy made the .5 assistant superintendent is so important. She just did an excellent job of coming down and getting organized so that we could do as well in the EQA audit as possible. We weren't fumbling, they weren't looking for anything. It was all in a box right up front. She did such a nice job that we sent all the information to them, and they did not have to come back and say, "But you're missing this," or "Could we have something more of that?" They had everything that they needed. She did an excellent job. As we said, we responded to the report. We've been working on the safety crisis plan, been working with the chief, as Mr. Harrington pointed out. We are not here to talk to you yet about the communication piece because we're not quite ready, we're not ready for it. We did, Paul and I did meet with the chief last week. He is looking at another program that calls you on the telephone, sends you an email. How many telephone calls do you, how many different telephones do you want us to give to you? But we want to see if we can make it coordinate with what, with a program that the town is going to have, too. So we are looking at additional bids. As the chief pointed out, we are also taking a look at better walkie-talkies, different ways to communicate with the police in the event that we have, you have an emergency again in the future, the people that are working to keep the kids safe in that place can better communicate. That is something that needs to be working, we need to be working on. We are going to be able to offer the Title I-K2 reading program again this year, but I think this will be the last year for it. In the past, we have combined funds for Title I and special education, and that's so that these little ones don't lose their skills over the summertime. So we have put together a smaller program this year to still meet the neediest of our children, again, so they don't lose those skill sets. At the upper level, we're talking about Ms. Pillsbury coming and working with us all of the time. In the past, she worked through school to career. She came and visited our students on two and a half days a week. It simply was not sufficient. We had so many more students that we knew we could keep here in Foxborough if we could be a little bit more inventive. Some of these children just cannot make it through a whole school day. So this gave us an opportunity for her to find them jobs for us, to have them come in for some of their core courses and still be successful, and it has been highly successful. In addition, because Ms. Pillsbury is here all of the time, she's been able to place many more of our children in jobs. Through Paul's work, we have outsourced the Metco transportation program, and that was huge. That's a big expense. We had a lot of conversations about how many buses and what hours are they going to run to make sure that we weren't running buses on a whim, we weren't running empty, virtually empty buses, and that we were, knew where the children were when they are here. Under Ms. Bernelli, we are monitoring the IDEA compliance. IDEA is the federal regulations for special education, and they have changed. In the past, there was more flexibility on when you could identify children as being special needs. There was more flexibility on what those plans would be. Now, the regulations are much more strict, talking about if this is what the disability is, these are the things that we can provide to those students. And Mrs. Bernelli has been working very hard with the special ed, special education teachers to make sure that we are in compliance with all of those. We simply can't be buying, purchasing everything, unfortunately. We've reduced the bus fleet by one, and that, again, is because Paul's been paying very close attention to how many buses do we need for our students. We've extended the New Horizons program. That is the summer program. This year, we worked very hard to put all of the summer programs in one booklet, because what happened in the past was, I'm looking, nodding parents out here, you get a folder that says, "All right, here's what New Horizons is," and, "Oh, by the way, if your child is a Title I student, they could take part in this," and, "Oh, if they're special, they could take part in this," and, "Oh, this is out here." And so this year, we put it all in one place to make it easier for the families, and we've also coordinated it so the times are good so that a child can attend a program in the morning as well as one in the afternoon. And we've extended the services during vacation weeks. We tried it out during spring break, and it worked very, very well, and we understand from the parents that they would like for us to do some more of that, so we'll be, all of you will be looking forward to that. Haven't quite said goodbye yet. In technology, we purchased and installed 350 new computers. Under Mr. Portolotti and Mr. Jackson, we have a new replacement program so that you don't get these old, what we have some very old Macs. They are slow, they have some fun games on them, but there's better stuff on the new programs, so by installing these new programs and these new computers, it's keeping everybody up to date and up to speed. Of course, we've been talking about the student information system, and hopefully, everything will be ready to rock and roll in the fall. I do want to say on the side that if that happens, go kiss every secretary you can find, because in order for that to occur, there's going to be a lot of typing, there's going to be a lot of programming, a lot of work, and I'm sitting next to Ms. Wills, who's crying, but there'll be an enormous amount of work in order to get all of that in place, but it's very definitely needed. This year, we purchased, updated, and trained administrators and counselors in TestWiz. TestWiz is the software that disaggregates all of the MCAS data. We have had it available to us in the past, but you had to have it downloaded, first uploaded and then downloaded by the computer. Through one of the title grants, we bought a web version, and this allows us to go into administrators and all of the counselors have immediate access to it. They can disaggregate it in any way they want to. For example, if they just want to see under measurement in mathematics, how did we do across all the grade levels, they can do that, as well as take a look at some longitudinal studies, so over the last four or five years, also to see, evaluate the program. We've increased the internet security, we've updated school and district websites, and that's what we've been talking about. And this is continual there because we have a couple of teachers who haven't quite gotten there, but we're working with them. We have collaborated with the town on the human resource package, and, again, we're researching the communication system with Chief O'Leary. With the school committee, I couldn't leave them out. Hats off, again. Every meeting, it seems to me, I have taken the opportunity to say, "Thank you for the curriculum cycle. Thank you for adopting the strategic plan. Thank you for the district improvement plan. Those are huge. As you read the EQA report, you see how huge they are. Thank you for your support. Thank you for adopting them. It makes a difference." The school committee is working very hard in revising the policies, an enormous amount of time to work on those revising of policies. We've had an administrator present at each one of those meetings because they are the ones who have to administer it. We were horribly outdated. Hats off to the Those are huge. As you read the EQA report, you see how huge they are. Thank you for your support. Thank you for adopting them. It makes a difference. The school committee is working very hard in revising the policies, an enormous amount of time to work on those revising of policies. We've had an administrator present at each one of those meetings, because they are the ones who have to administer it. We were horribly outdated. Hats off to the committee. Not only have they said, asked MASCE to provide recommendations, they've also been reviewing them, and I have every reason to believe you're going to get yourselves up to date. I commend you for initiating the drug and alcohol awareness for the town. Clearly, it needs to be done. I agree about the implementation, slowly, work with the students, work with the parents, get them to know what this is all about. I'm going to be ending this report in a second, and everybody's going to say, "Well, wait a minute, how can be the highlights and you haven't mentioned that we've had outstanding teachers with outstanding awards, students who have, have won awards." But this year, we brought them to the school committee. We had them, had to meet with them. We made a concerted effort to put their names in the agendas. So congratulations to all of our teachers who have shown rightly for Foxborough. Again, fabulous staff. They have been recognized over the years, and I think that this school committee has done an excellent job of recognizing and having them come to the school committee, shaking their hands, and setting them up as the examples that we want. This year, the school committee did establish goals for the superintendent. They were prepared to evaluate me, and I'm going to scoot out of here as quickly as I can. Thanks for the gift. And the last thing, and I think is very important, I think you've done, we always giggle at the end, under other matters, gee, Dr. Norton, do you have anything? Well, yes, I have a gift. More and more people are stepping forward, and Vences is leading the way in offering gifts to Foxborough Public Schools. If you're out there and you'd like to give us a gift, we have a way of spending it. Congratulations to the school committee for starting that, for acknowledging that, those gifts in public, for giving a little bit more time to accepting those gifts, and hopefully more and more people will contribute to you. Now, if you have questions about EQA, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right, let me start with Katie.
Okay. Well, it's really more just comments and questions, because I thought you did a great presentation, Larry and Dr. Norton. You know, I guess my initial reaction reading the EQA was definitely, you know, sharing the consensus of a lot of it, disturbed by some of the information. Trying to put it into perspective, as you were saying, Dr. Norton, too, in terms of filtering through that, and I think that's true of any information you get, you need to do that, you need to, you need to kind of filter through it, and, but I think that it, again, as you said, commended the teachers that are there in the classrooms, and I think that we are very fortunate to have the teachers that we have. You know, when you're reading this report, the highlights of this report, I think that's something that, you know, you think in the back of your mind, as a parent especially, and being very grateful that things went on, you know, despite other things not being done. I think we, as a school committee, have tried to drive a lot of, in the past year, a lot of the changes that you presented, Dr. Norton, tonight, the accomplishments, and, again, the policy manual obviously is the blueprint for what we do. So we obviously need to, we will finish that this, hopefully, this summer, and I think we're all committed to doing that. I think one thing that I, as a parent, feel, and being on the school committee feels, reading this report, and just really like anything, and I know you had just mentioned, Dr. Norton, that we need to take time, you know, to implement certain things, but I think personally, I feel oftentimes a sense of urgency at times when, throughout this past year and seeing certain things, you kind of want to put those things into place as quickly as you can to ensure that we're doing what we need to do for every student in this district. Of course, we have to acknowledge that, that, of course, takes time, and we can't rush because we want to do it right. But I think that that's our role as a school committee, to kind of keep that focus, to do it as best as we can, in as timely manner as we can. And I think that you have certainly outlined the many accomplishments that were done this past year that are credit to you and your administration, and a credit to us, and a credit to the public, and I just want to see us moving forward, because I think that's where we can only go, is to move forward in that direction, so.
Thank you, Bill.
Mirror, mirror on the wall, reflected the sad essence of our dark decade. I think that when people look at the report on the website, we need to place as soon as possible our new mirror, our 2006, 2007 mirror, so that they can see what our new reflection is, so that they know we are in a new era. If I were in the theater right now, I would stand up, and I would give every teacher in this district a standing ovation for seeing the students through and helping them in all of their accomplishments.
And even the report said that despite the leadership and the morale issues, the teachers, quote, "soldiered on," and the student achievement remained solid. So even the state acknowledged how hard the teachers worked despite what they were dealing with, and the students as well. Martha?
Well, a couple of things. I know I live and die by documentation, and I think one of the things that was brought out by the EQA is that in order to hold people accountable, you do have to document what's going on, and if you don't, then how can you hold people accountable? And I think that's very important, because I know in my practice, if I don't document it, then it didn't happen, and therefore, when it comes down to litigation, I'm held accountable. So I think, if nothing else, the EQA pointed out to each and every one of us what needs to be done, what should be done, and what has to be done. And I think it will lend a lot to the future in how we, you know, move forward and what we need to do. You know, I can't help but wonder, if it wasn't for the EQA coming in, how many of these things might still be, not on the back burner, but, you know, it puts an essence into what we do and how we have to do it. So I think the EQA, as hard and harsh as it can be in what it's telling us, I think it will help us bring ourselves to another level, and I think that's very important. And I think we need to look at it, understand it, embrace it, and move on. And I think that's what we're going to do, and I commend each and everybody within the system who has been able to move forward and always keep us at a high level, but I think we can take it to the next level. So with the EQA, I think it's just going to point it out loud and clear what we need to do.
Kate?
I would just like to thank Dr. Norton and the wonderful team that you continue to lead this year, and you took this team to new heights, phenomenal team, and I think the accomplishments that you shared with us tonight reinforce that. As far as the EQA, 2003, for the 2004 school year, we, Foxborough cut $2 million. The schools had to absorb a $1 million cut, over 20 positions. We had to take down things that would not immediately impact, and one of the things, we fell behind in curriculum even then. It was an uphill battle for that previous school committee to even fund an assistant superintendent, which led to Dr. Norton coming in mid-year, because that was the only way we could afford it and squeak it in. Absolutely on the right track, but given, on the heels of that, we suffered a scandal. I still believe that that led to turnover. Again, though, I think the committee handled that in the right way, rebuilt, and what we're seeing today is, in fact, the results of that. But we had still fallen behind on curriculum, and when we lost the previous superintendent, it still put us behind in curriculum. That's going to be corrected, and I do think that there's a commitment. It's not enough to do things right, you need to also have the documentation. We worked two years to make sure that the long-term strategic plan was the right plan, and that undermines everything that you accomplished, Dr. Norton, and let us not forget that. If we had done it the old way we did it, we still wouldn't have been compliant with the Department of Education, and we had a lot of problems. That's why our long-term strategic planning fell out of use. I do believe with your leadership and the leadership of Dr. Ladd, going out, getting the right strategic, a long-term strategic planning that's pertinent and relevant to education, made this happen. And again, I can't thank you enough, Dr. Norton, and I wish you the very best. I know you'll have continued success. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on the EQA report? Lorraine, is that your hand?
Yep.
All right, we'll try to prompt the microphone, please. You know the drill. Name and address.
Wellingburg 126 Mechanics Street. I wanted to repeat what I think everybody's already said, but to thank the school committee and the school administration. You can just see the tremendous progress that's been made in this past year as it relates to all of these criteria that were identified as deficiencies. I just wanted to ask a question about the EQA process. Is there a reevaluation or re-inspection point that they come back and follow up? Is there like a certain, every three years?
Not yet. Not yet. I think that's one of the thoughts down the road. But this year, if you might, you might recall that the governor came forward and was not approving that EQA, funding for EQA at all. Legislature decided to continue to fund it, but it's going to go back under the Department of Education, so the process may change. It's just like the curriculum cycle, you can't do it one time and then not come back and visit it, so that would be the proper way of doing it. But what it is now, as it exists now, is it's a one-time report, it sits there for 10 years. Hopefully, everybody looks at it and says, "Ho-hum, that was how long ago?" But there, again, there's no opportunity to say, "But here's what we've done."
You know, going back to what Martha was saying about documentation, if this continues, if EQA continues to be a process that stays in place, we have a similar process in healthcare. You know, a regulatory agency comes in and does this on a regular basis. Perhaps you could consider getting, as these criteria are updated each year or two years, and perform self-inspections.
Yeah.
Which is what we do in healthcare.
There weren't, yeah, there weren't any terrific surprises, I mean, you know, and it's also, remember, it's also done through the lens of somebody coming in who's saying, "Where's the document?" I think the DIP is where you evaluate yourself, that's where all of the things that you're really looking for exist, but I've interrupted you, but I have no idea whether EQA is going to continue.
Lorraine, I think one thing is that, as one person on this committee, I take this report very seriously, and as long as I sit on this committee, I will continue to advocate and make sure that we do things the way we're supposed to. And I think when you, when we have time to really read the whole report and take it to heart, for anybody who's been here any period of time can reflect on it and understand that there is a direction, there is a goal. I'm not happy with the needs improvement, I'm not happy with, you know, if there's unsatisfactory, and I think it's probably self-promoting in some way in that you want it to improve, so you have to take their criticism seriously, and you have to act on it, and I think we have. I think the best part of EQA coming in here was it really spelled out what we were doing and what we weren't doing, and that's important. And to not take that to heart and do something about it, then you're shirking your responsibility as administrator, as a school committee member, and the parents need to hold us all accountable. And that's, this gives us a tool. It's not something that's going to sit on the back burner. It's something we're going to take to heart, and we're going to move on improving it.
Martha, I would just like to add a couple of closing comments. We've given Dr. Norton a lot of credit, because she deserves a lot of the credit. Mr. Jackson deserves a lot of credit as well. He's worked 80 hours a week for the last year. All the administrators have worked very hard, all the teachers have worked very hard. It's been a collaborative effort, and it's also been an effort on the school committee. We've debated some issues, we've argued about some issues, we pushed on accountability, we pitched on goals and objectives. We've argued through evaluation process, we've argued through going out to other communities and looking before we put a program in, what are the lessons learned? I think this committee has tried to take accountability to a new level. We've held ourselves accountable, we've held administration accountable, and I think we've worked hard at addressing the real issues. We've brought forth the over a billion-dollar city and revolving accounts that could have been used in the last few years to do things that didn't get done. We went to the town and talked the town into $50,000 for the lights at the high school, I'm sorry, at the football field, when the athletic revolving account was sitting with $130,000 in it, and that money could have been taken out of there, and the town could have used that money for other purposes. This committee has put in monthly budget reports, we've shown the budget reports every month, we have funded the curriculum, we have analyzed the revolving accounts, we've shared those publicly. So I also think that all five members of the school committee, although we haven't always agreed on everything, and we've had some healthy debate, I think the school committee, regardless of EQA, because back in June, July, and August, we weren't all familiar with what EQA was and what they were going to look at, but we knew what needed to be done. We knew what was wrong with the system. We knew where the leadership was lacking, we knew where the accountability was lacking, we knew where the data was missing, and as a committee, we worked through together, we worked through subcommittees, we worked through full committees, in autumn, start to put things in place so that by September, through the fall into the winter, we were making a lot of progress. It was the committee that decided we wanted the principals to come and report. It was the committee that decided on the changes we wanted to make in the financial report. So I want to make sure that everybody recognizes that where we are today is a combination of people collaborating together, talking to each other, working together, and coming to a spirit of accountability where we could all improve. And it's that spirit, I think, that is, as you said, brought forth people giving gifts, people donating, and other things that have been really positive for our community and positive for our schools. And I think that we have a relationship today that's better than ever with the municipal side, and the outreach that we've had with the municipal side, and the partnership we've had with them, because we know it's one community, and we know that we need to work together. And so I'm just very proud to be part of this school committee, and I like the debate, I like the disagreement, because that's how we grow, by listening to each other's different viewpoints, and always trying to be as respectful as we can. Mr. Nevado, you'll have to come up to the front desk.
You know, most of these are copies.
Just wait till you get to the, that's not a 200-page letter you're going to read.
No, 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 most of these are copies. Sorry. I just read the, I'm sorry, Andres Navarro 94's proof. I just read the report this evening, and just brought some copies. I don't have a statement made, but I just wanted to talk about, back in 2003, when we came to the committee to defend a .7 music teacher position, we saw that there were other things that perhaps more pressing issues for the schools, and we looked at those. We felt something was not right, but we're not, I'm sorry, she is a professional educator. I'm an educator, not K through 12. She has her doctorate in education now. Okay, so I'll take that out. We felt something was not quite right, and so we started looking at it. We had to, we asked for assistance from many people, some came and gave us, but when we came face-to-face with the former chair, we found, few were willing to be seen with us at the time. We asked for help from county and state agencies, and it was inconsistent. Sometimes we got it, sometimes we didn't. And our response, we stated that, and one of the responses we got was that they were saying, "Yes, that might have been, you're correct, but that was de minimis," and we learned the legal term, meaning not relevant or not of great importance. And those were the way, the words that the district attorney's office gave us. So we decided to put together those little things, and in that, we learned, and when we came with what you might have seen, the citizen's perspective. As we look at the, as we look at the, this perspective, and the EQA report, I'm sorry, we realize a few things that were already mentioned before in there. And I'll just go through this because, quickly, some of the points that the EQA pointed out, as we were preparing the document, actually, we came, we realized that the ECAM was again... as we were preparing the document, actually, we came, we realized that the ECAM was, as a predecessor of the EQA, had done an investigation or an audit in Sharon. And we looked at those standards that they used to evaluate them. And you can find that on page 73. And we said, "Okay, if we apply this to Foxville, what would we find?" The no strategic plan that you mentioned in the overview, that you can find on page 72 and 75. The lack of policies, we said that in page 68. The ineffective budgeting process, we realized that there were no policies about budget or finance at all. And those are in contrast with what this year has, the budgeting process of this year. And we have to, we have to thank all of you here for pushing that process forward. We asked for the evaluation tool of administrators back in the fall of 2004. And you know what the answers that we got. We never made much out of that because the material didn't have any information to be used.
There was no template. It was a narrative. And so it was difficult to ascertain the criteria as being consistent with the document that the state requires that the EQA speaks to effective administrative leadership.
We, we looked at administrators' contracts and we published a little, something on that. That's on the website. That there was, I'm glad that, you know, despite ineffective leadership and poor morale, teachers soldiered on and student achievement remained solid. And actually, I would, I think that's at the core of this report and is a great foundation for it. We remember that there was a vote of non-confidence that was attempted, that didn't reach, and perhaps we would have stopped the process of deterioration earlier. The, this student achievement was part of what was used, perhaps to bolster the image as we may remember the standard reports, report in 2005. The lack of attention to improvement plan that you point in the specific findings, you'll find it on page 84 and 85. The district written guidelines and policies, we talk about that in pages 17 and 17. Specific findings, that there were no finance policies outlining guidelines and procedures for running the financial business of the district. I think in a committee led by a lawyer and an accountant is embarrassing, but that's what it, that's what it says. Since 2003, the budget cuts have affected, you know, the business manager. We didn't have one around that time, the one Dr. Moriarty had resigned. And we went without one for a long, for almost eight months. The allocation of budget based on student achievement data, we mentioned something like that in page 93. And there are several of these things here. The review of the 19 administrative personnel files. We already talked about the written evaluation. The evaluation based on administrative leadership. We even sent a letter to Mr. Thomas and the committee back in January of 2004, you know, enumerating these things. So some of these, a lot of this is already in there that we saw it. It's not an "I told you so," but it's a, it's part of the four years that we've suffered.
Like Dan Norton says, it's not a surprise that the EQA should save us.
Thank you. And I have here the, you can look through the minutes of April 26, 2004. I'm sorry, I only have made 10 copies. This is on a personal budget. But, and back even in June 27 of 2005, when the school committee actually discussed the, under the heading of the direction of the schools, the school committee discussion on direction of the school system, I'm sorry, on page 5, you will see that, you know, the glowing report that some people had and yet Ms. Latery and Ms. Lord that were present at the time wanted to make us aware of the fact that there were things that needed to be done. So perhaps we should have listened to them a little bit earlier and some of the students that went through without would have, would have not suffered. However, I just think that this is a process and not a goal. That, and I'm sorry, Hector is traveling, but he, I learned something from him, that while in school, we learned the lesson and then we followed by the test, life is a little bit different. Life gives us the test first and then we have to learn the lesson from it. And those are his mother's words. And the EQA audit has tested our district. I think we have learned how our district stands up against expectations of professionals in the business. And this is not the final test for our district. I think there will be others. When we aim to educate, we aim to educate lifelong learners. We tacitly accept that the learning process is ongoing throughout life. Therefore, the remodeling and revision of our schools and the education process must be revisited periodically to keep pace with regulations, discoveries, and innovations. This is, you know, it's not live happily ever after, is tomorrow we'll have to do some more. And that's just the way life is. Some 10 years ago, a group of parents got involved and known as FACS, and they fought for what they saw was necessary. And I, I will presume that they fought for what they believed was right. And you've talked about accountability from the committee, from the administration. Well, I think that also there's accountability for parents that we need to bring here. And when they, I, when they achieve what they thought needed, they needed, I think for whatever reason, those parents, well-intentioned as I believe they were, they just fell the bandwagon or they stopped participating in our process. And in that, I think, that would be the loss. We need to continue to engage the public and the parents because if, in Spanish, we say that el ojo del amo engorda al caballo. And the eye of the master will make sure that the horse will grow strong and healthy, to paraphrase. And it is the parents that need to watch the process and the taxpayers. Accountability, by its very nature, is retrospective. It will always be. You cannot have it all the way. And this is not us three. There are many of us. As a matter of fact, four of the members in this committee have helped us in many ways at one point or another. And we've seen them suffer greatly in previous days, in previous times. We are proud of what we have done. But we don't know if others that have collaborated with us would fear still being associated with us. But that has been the time, that has been the nature of times. It's not because I don't acknowledge their help and support. This past year, we heard many processes and documents that we did not have before. And actually, what we have done is simply document what the EQA has said. It actually, the monumental, what this actually shows, what we've done in the last two years is the monumental work that Dr. Norton has done, leading an administrative team, leading a committee, and sometimes taking the lead from the committee to get it done. And also that the EQA was correct, that this needed to be done.
Mr. Navarro, I don't want to appear to be rude or...
No, that was, that was my...
But I think you've made your point clear that, you know, as I said here, many people raised these issues many years ago. And what we're doing as a committee is we're listening to that constructive criticism and trying to react. And we're trying to be reactive, proactive rather than reactive. So I thank you for your comments. And unless there's anything else, I'd like to try to move on on the agenda.
I just want to give you...
There is a piece later on that if you want to make any other comments, you could.
I just want to give you a copy of this.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate your constructive criticism and hope that we will continue to receive it.
Thank you.
Remember, Mr. Ballen can watch us on streaming video.
He'll be watching us from someplace. Where is he these days?
This one.
I'm not quite sure, but I know that he does catch up with the web-based availability of the video recording of these movies, yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the CPAC recommendation. Paul, you and Dr. Norton have reviewed this and you have a recommendation to the committee?
Mr. Chairman, the school committee administration recently received a request for funding from the CPAC, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, in the amount of $1,500. Ms. Brunelli did a analysis of surrounding towns' support for the CPACs. This past year, FY07, we provided $490 of support in terms of presenters as well as membership in the state PAC, MAS PAC, membership to the tune of $190. Based on the analysis, my recommendation, our recommendation, would be that we continue to support the amount of $490 plus postage, clerical time, and copying as was provided in FY07.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any thoughts on this topic? Anybody on the committee want to respond to Dr. Norton or Mr. Jackson?
I would.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Kate?
I would just like to say, this is the second time in 13 years that we have, we'll be voting money, hopefully, we're going to be voting money again to support the CPAC. For our parents at home, this is the one parent advisory council that is required under the Ed reform law. Parents did a magnificent job doing fundraising, as do all our parents in their fundraising efforts. It gets harder and harder as the crunch was on to have fundraisers to support other areas. And the parents of the special education PAC have done a remarkable job. They've used every resource, left no stone unturned. They have spent years getting free speakers. That is increasingly hard to do. It makes sense that the parents will want to have a membership, as we saw most of the surrounding towns all do, in the special PAC, professional membership that supports sped PACs. And I think it's time that we fund, we're talking $490 out of a, you know, $23 million budget. It's time for us to fund this. It makes sense and there is, I think, a very good return on that investment. This would be the second year and I totally support the funding of $490 to accomplish this goal.
Is that a motion, Kate?
I would, well, if there's any discussion, I'd be happy to make, I'd be proud to make that a motion.
I'd be happy to take a motion in a second and then take any further discussion. So there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board?
No.
All those in favor of this voting? It carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The next item is the approval of utility bids.
Mr. Chairman, annually, we conduct a bidding process for service contracts. The service contracts are used both by the school as well as the town. This year, we solicited bids for electrical service, plumbing, gas oil burner service, elevator maintenance and service, fire line maintenance and service, emergency generator service, and HVAC service. We received one bid for electrical service. I would recommend the committee award the bid to Richards Brothers Electric, 905 South Main Street, Mayesville, Mass.
Need a motion for that?
If you want the one motion or individual motions?
At a time or at the end?
Probably individual would be better.
Okay. So is there a motion to...
I like a motion.
Motion made by Martha, seconded by Kate.
Oh, Beth.
I'll get you first. I'll get her next time. Any discussion?
No, it's Kate.
All in favor? Hi. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Plumbing, we received no bids. We'll continue to use Jawalsh Plumbing for a service of maintenance that we cannot handle internally. On the gas and oil burner service, we have one bid, Solar Tech Corporation, the amount of $82 per hour for licensed technicians, $58 per hour for apprentice technicians. I would recommend the award of the bid to Solar Tech Corp.
Motion made by Martha, seconded by Katie.
You get the next one. No, I'm pointing at Beth.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
We received one bid for elevator maintenance and service, Associated Elevator Company, 583 Forest Road, South Yarmouth, Mass. $150 an hour for a licensed technician, $120 per hour for apprentice technician. I would recommend the committee award the bid to elevator maintenance and service.
I feel like I'm...
Motion by Beth, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Seconded by Martha. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We received one bid for fire line maintenance and service, home electronic light protection, 140 Chestnut Street in Oaxaca, Mass. $85 an hour for a licensed technician, $40 per hour for an apprentice technician. I would recommend the committee vote to award the contract to Fire Line Maintenance and Service.
Motion by Martha.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Emergency generator service, we actually received two bids, one from Southworth, Milton, and Milford at $112 per hour plus travel, and one from FM Generator, Emergency Generator Inc., from Canton, Mass. of $80 per hour. I would recommend the committee award the bid to, for the emergency generator service to FM Emergency Generator Inc. at $80 per hour.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Martha. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Final bid was HVAC and we did not receive any bids. We will continue to use Conlon &amp; Sons for any service that maintenance cannot provide.
Okay. Next item, Paul, is your budget summary statement?
Budget summary statement, last one we submitted was two weeks ago. The statement has shown a decrease, the surplus has decreased by $102,217. A big piece of that is we've moved the money that the committee had voted to spend out of the surplus back into lines within the budget.
Right. That attachment last night, the last meeting, it'll be approved.
So if you flip to the second page, you can see the changes that have occurred in the last two weeks. Some internal transfers. I have Bowland, Napson Globe surplus, Adobe surplus, to indicate where the committee had voted to expend money. Net change was a minus $3,365 for the surplus for the Barlow School. The Igo School, again, I've highlighted the surplus items, net change was a minus $6,368 to the surplus. Taylor School, net change minus $3,247.31 to the surplus. Ahurn, minus $8,114 was the net change to the surplus. High School, minus $26,513.75 is the net change to the surplus. Now, the high school will not receive all of the whiteboards or all of the chairs or all of the file cabinets. However, I needed a place to put it, so the high school was the lucky recipient for now. Athletics, we put $3,600 to fund the football field PA system. Net change was 600 because we also released $3,000 to the surplus from athletic contracted services. Special education, that change was $4,190. Internal transfer and reprojection of transportation expense. Technology, $3,462 to the surplus. We do not fill a position that we had been releasing money slowly in anticipation of filling the position. Art, $3,995 negative to the surplus. That was the printer. It was approved by the committee. Music, a number of internal transfers between accounts, $55,000 net change to the surplus was the money for the instruments. Phys ed, we show an internal transfer of $300 to surplus. It actually, the $300 went from phys ed to home ec. Home ec is budgeted within the high school. Phys ed has its own separate page, but they were within the wellness budget. Media net, we had some internal transfers with a zero net change. Transportation, we've reprojected expense. We actually added three late runs for the Medco. Net change was $15,070 to the surplus. A big piece of that was fuel. We've seen a rise in fuel price over the last three months from $2, 10 cents per gallon to $2.40 a gallon to now $2.60 a gallon. I was a little concerned about May in that May, April and May tend to be our highest months in terms of athletic transportation and field trips. And we got the May bill in and it turned out that I was way too conservative on our bus fuel, so that we've released $16,900 to the surplus. Plant, net change, $15,500 against the surplus. I neglected to highlight the high school shades. Igo Window surplus, or the Igo counter, were things that were voted by the committee against surplus. District-wide, negative impacts of $15,293. That primarily was the $24,000 for ELA supplies. That primarily was the $24,000 for ELA supplies that was voted from the surplus. The superintendent's office, we reprojected advertising, we're way under what we had projected, so we freed up $6,000, and we freed up $5,000 from a legal account for a positive impact of the surplus of $12,758. This nets out to a negative change to the surplus of minus 102,217.
To make it simple, Paul, the after we, after what we approved last week, the actual surplus is sitting at what?
$78,700.
Right, so just so everybody understands, we're, after what we approved last night, we're still at $78,700. Martha, you got a question?
A question or a recommendation? I know we're getting down to the wire on what we can and cannot do on the surplus. And if it stands at, what, $78,000?
Right.
We do have a meeting on the 27th for policies. I would advocate that we add other matters, and if anything comes up between now and then that we could use the surplus on before we turn any monies back to the town, I'd like to see us.
I've asked Wendy to put on the agenda for that meeting, surplus rather than other matters, so it's very specific so the public knows that we'll get an update at the very last minute if there's anything we need to do. But there are a couple of additional items that Paul would like the committee to consider this evening in terms of use of the surplus and/or revolving accounts. You want to walk us through those, Paul?
Yes, sir. We discussed at the last meeting, Michael Ray provided us an update with the Taylor Playground. The net effect of the Taylor Playground recommendation would be a $34,000 expenditure.
Paul, I would, although you have on your page here to take it out of the surplus, I would ask the committee to consider taking it out of the building rental account. We've received rental funds at the Taylor School for that auditorium, and, you know, returning parts of the surplus, we get that back next year, the town gets that back. It's very positive for us as we look at our future financial condition. The revolving accounts should be touched for those one kind, one-time kinds of things. And in this particular case, for many years, Taylor did get building rental, and we should allocate out of that same account. So I would like the committee to entertain a motion to approve $34,000 for the Taylor Playground, but to take it out of the building rental account.
I would love to make that motion for the fall 4th.
Motion by, all right, motion by Kate, seconded by everybody. All those in favor of that? Close, motion carries five to zero. The Taylor Playground is now on an even level with the other schools.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm wishing you many sunny days, Mike, this summer.
You're gonna need it.
I'm busy.
Whereas we say the downfall won't start after all your work is completed.
Language lab?
Well, first, the fencing at the Igo Playground, $2,200.
$2,400, $2,200.
$2,200.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting through the meeting.
The language lab, I had asked the committee for $2,875 to add five stations to the language lab, which has been discussed over the past year as being a need. And a need for the occasional time that there are more than 25 students in that lab trying to use the stations when there are only 25 stations. And on the, I should say, rare occasion that from a technological standpoint, one of those stations goes down, we'd like to add five stations. I had asked for $2,875. What I neglected to include in that request was the software licenses associated with those five stations, cabling and cost to install, so that the $2,875 really represented the furniture. But we need another $9,522 to actually make those cubicles usable as opposed to just empty. So then I'm asking for $9,522 additional.
Do I have a motion to approve that? Being made Martha, seconded by Katie. Discussion by the committee? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Now let's go back to the offense for the playground at the Igo. Again, just for purposes of consistency, I'd like to, even though it's a small amount, I just would like to take that out of the revolving account because it's a one-time item. And at the end of the day, we'll either use whatever's left in the surplus for an appropriate use, or we'll return it to the town and have that opportunity next year for that money. So if we can vote on that, and then there's one other thing I just would bring up on that, so.
Which revolving account do you want us to come up with?
Building rental?
Take out of the building rental.
Yeah.
Right. So is there a motion by, motion by Beth, seconded by Martha? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Paul, one of the issues that we had talked about at the last meeting, we approved $55,000 for band equipment. As I understand it, when Mr. Massey put his request forward, he's put requests many years, and they never get anyplace, and so he just gave up asking. And when he was asked this year, he hesitated putting in a request, but he did. But what he did is he did the typical Foxborough way. He said, "Well, they'll never give me a lot of money to do it, so I'll go out and I'll price it based on a five-year lease, and at the end of the lease, we own the equipment. We own the musical instrument." That's a very, very expensive way of doing it. We last, at our last meeting, approved $55,000 in cash. Now that means when he bids the equipment, he will probably get a 40% or 50% or 60% discount. So that 55-
Because of the cash.
Because of the cash instead of the lease. So that $55,000 is going to go a lot further than it might have sounded. But it will still leave him short on that list, and so maybe when we meet at our next meeting, if you have some ideas to how short they are of the instruments, maybe we could consider that at that point.
I can actually give it to you now.
Okay.
Oh, great.
The original request at list price was $122,773.
Right.
If I take 60% of that as an estimate, it would cost, assuming that our 40% discount would be correct, $73,683.
Sixty-three.
In addition to the 55?
In addition, that would be the total.
So another $18,000 would get him the list.
So.
Would get him the full list.
Would get him the full list, $18,000.
And that would carry us for how long? That's over the next, this infusion of capital for this investment will, I mean, it hasn't been done at least decades.
So these instruments will last forever.
This is going to take us, this will take us, we're estimating at least another decade? Is that reasonable?
Well, I don't, I think, in my discussion with him, he's been turned down so many times his list is short to begin with. But he wasn't anticipating that we'd even give him anything. So I think it'll last him a while, but I don't know if it's 10 years. But it makes, it's, what Mr. Massey said is he would be able to have these in here by September, so 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th would have access to all of this equipment. It'll be shared across all the schools. And he believes it'll make a significant impact on the music program. So if the committee was willing, we could authorize an additional $18,000 from the surplus.
I think we should.
Could I ask, and move it to $20,000 so that we're at an even $75,000?
Sure, you could do that. Is there a motion?
Thank you, I thought I was being picky.
Yes, I'll make that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Beth, for another $20,000 for the musical instruments. So that would take the total request to $75,000.
You know, it's ironic, if this was a sports program or whatever, and they needed something like this to infuse the program, then certainly we would do it. And I think in order for us to keep our world-class music program, it's time for us to invest in the instruments and keep it going.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Did we vote on the, on the language lab, the 90?
Yes, we did. And we voted on the playground.
Is that surplus or is that building rental?
No, that's how it's surplus.
That's surplus.
Surplus.
All right. Martha, did you want to give the public a quick update on the policy revision?
Well, we're moving along. I think we're doing a lot better than I even anticipated. We do have a meeting coming up on the 27th. Unfortunately, this is a big section, so we're going to be tight, but I think we might make it.
All right. I have, I have, the committee has a copy of a letter that I sent to Mr. Hector Valen, copied to the school committee, Dr. Norton and Dr. Nevada, that being Mrs. Dr. Nevada, not Mr. Dr. Nevada. Since they're both doctors, I wanted to make sure I had the right one, but since Mrs. Nevada wrote the letter. You raised three issues on June 4th for which I am responding. One issue deals with the December 29th letter sent by Dr. Nevada that has gone unanswered by the committee. The letter addressed the chairwoman's suggestion at a November 27th meeting that we consider a change in the way we record minutes, but a statement that we would discuss this change in public before such changes to the process were made. Dr. Nevada noted no discussion ever took place yet the October 16th and 30th executive session minutes were written in a new abbreviated format, and she raised four questions. One, will you tell the public the true facts of what happened during the executive sessions of October 16th and 30th? Two, will you release new minutes to document what happened? Three, will you honor your promise to discuss the new format of minutes in public? Four, will you embrace a posture of openness for difficult issues? Let me start with the last question and work backwards. I believe we, as a committee, have embraced a posture for openness, and we will continue to work to be as transparent as possible. At a recent policy meeting, we did discuss the format for minutes, and we agreed to retain the current format. We do not intend to release new minutes for the two executive sessions you questioned. Regarding what happened in those two meetings, the minutes deal with the resignation of the former superintendent. As documented in the 918 minutes, there was some disagreement among committee members about the process leading up to the resignation. Much of this was discussed in the newspapers at the time. Those conflicting views were again discussed at the 1016 meeting. The former superintendent's attorney proposed the resignation and a settlement offer directly to our attorney, who negotiated that request down to $175,000 and presented it to the school committee for consideration. School committee options were to reject, negotiate, or accept. We chose to accept. When committee members could not reach agreement on how much of the discussion to include in the minutes, the chairwoman ended that meeting so she could review the matter with our attorney. The chairwoman discussed the two sets of minutes with Mr. Lockren, our attorney, who suggested some revisions. The committee then met on November 27th, at which time revised minutes, excuse me, were approved 4 to 1. Another issue you brought up was the April 2004 Collins Report. While I was not on the school committee at the time, I have talked to Martha Slattery, who was, and with Mike Lockren. The Collins Report that was presented to the school committee and to the community as a draft report became the final report de facto, since no changes were made to it after that public meeting. Additional work was performed after the meeting, however, as stated in the draft report, the anticipated additional work related to personnel actions, which we are not of liberty to discuss. I found no vote by the committee to accept the draft report as final, which I think should have occurred considering the public nature of the investigation as well as the cost of the investigation. I will ask the school committee this evening to acknowledge the investigation is complete and accept the draft report as a final report. Your last issue involves a letter to the editor by a parent about an incident involving her son and a teacher. I understand the matter was addressed by the Ahern principal as per policy. I am sorry that the parent felt the district's reaction to this issue was inadequate, and as a result, felt compelled to write the Foxborough Reporter. I also understand that Dr. Norton did not return the parent's telephone call, which could have provided an opportunity to assure the parent that matter was being handled appropriately and per policy. I hope this addresses all of your open questions. The school committee appreciates your interest in the school system and your desire to see our students reach their full potential. I will entertain a motion from the committee to acknowledge the Collins Report investigation, the investigation that led to the Collins Report is considered complete and to accept the draft report as the final report.
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Martha. I have a second by Kate. Do I have any discussion? All those, I'm sorry, did I, is something, sorry?
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Mrs. Nevada, did you have anything else you wanted to say? Is Mr. Nevada speaking for you now? Okay.
Andres Navarro, 94, please. We're moved, and we're grateful for the motion of the committee and for the vote. Of all of that, we'll consider it in due time, but I still want to make one more comment that regardless of how we might have felt different than Dr. Norton did, I still will miss her. I still have a lot of respect for her, and I know she cares. And that is what we want. We may disagree, but I'm glad that you were here. Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you. Okay, we're running just a little bit behind, but not as far behind as some of my committee members thought we would be. Under other matters, I wanted to bring up one item for the committee. A week and a half ago, I was going through our school committee website, and so I had a conversation with Wendy. I noticed that the superintendent's search committee meetings for January 23rd, March 15th, March 22nd, March 27th, and March 28th have not been approved and therefore not up on the website. We need to find a way to get those approved and get them up on the website.
I don't know, if we're not going to meet again, they won't be approved, but they will be put up as draft.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have them all.
Right.
Yeah, you have them all.
All right, so let's get them up as draft. There was a substitute teacher subcommittee meeting on January 19th, and minutes from that meeting are not up on the website either.
Well, I need to help attend to that, don't I?
So I'd like to get those up. I think it was you and me.
Yes, yes.
We said that last time when we had.
Right, so I'd like to try to get those done.
Graduations are over now. There were several.
And so if you two would work on that before the next meeting?
Yeah, I just have one, just to give you a heads up, I'll be out of town, so I will make it to the 27th meeting, so it will actually be one more meeting cycle before we can meet, if that's, perhaps we could do it after we meet on the 27th.
Well, maybe, if I can find my notes, we might be able to get it done sooner.
Okay.
Maybe if you do it.
And then the policy review meeting minutes, we're late on those, and we need to get those for the next meeting up to date. And that way, we can get all of our meetings on a current basis on the website. But there's two other things that I noticed on the website. Number one, we go back to 2004, 2005, and you're going to scroll all the way down now to get to the latest minutes. I'd like to suggest to the committee that we take a policy that says we keep 12 months and we keep 24 months on the website and archive the rest of them. Would also suggest that we start with the most recent, you know, and work, so it's easier for someone to find the minutes. I don't think we need a formal vote, I just would like the consensus, the board would be willing to do that. And finally, on that same webpage, there's no, we have all the minutes and things, now that all of our meetings are rebroadcast, you can see them anytime, a day or night, there should probably be an icon, a link, there should be something that reminds someone looking for minutes that they can actually watch the real meeting if they want. So whether it's a crawler, or a link, or whatever, I'd like to see us do that. And then we can also update the webpage on the reorganization that took place some time ago.
Yes, that should, that's in the process of being, he's working on it.
So that's what I had under other matters. One other quick item is that there's a, the planning board has invited us to attend, two members of the school committee to attend their meeting tomorrow night at 7:30. I'd like to ask Beverly if she's available to attend with me. We'll just tell them that what we're trying to do is to look at what the future growth is, can they help us figure out how many homes aren't left to be built, how much land, et cetera, and so that over the next few weeks or next few months, we can gather that information. So we'll do that tomorrow night. Dr. Norton, did you have anything under other business?
Yes, Ms. Lord will be happy to hear this. It's a letter from the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association. Dear Superintendent, each year, the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association sponsors a statewide poster contest to encourage student awareness regarding the importance of foreign language study. The contest is open to all schools in Massachusetts for students of teachers who are members of MathLa. This year's contest was great success. There were 79 posters from 27 schools across the state. In your district, foreign language teachers, Helene Loomis and Allison Anderson Sterling from John J. Ahern Middle School, had student participation in this year's contest. The theme was languages mirroring the world, shaping the future. Can be very proud of your district's participation. Goes on a little bit about plotting the enthusiasm. So I just wanted to add our plaudits and thanks to Ms. Loomis and Mrs. Anderson Sterling for encouraging their students to take part in this program.
Thank you. Beverly, did you have anything?
Actually, Katie and I were able, Mrs. Slattery, to attend last Tuesday over in Plainfield, the Division IV meeting. New offices were elected, and both representative of Richard Ross from Rantham and Patricia Haddad were there to address us. Want to say more?
Um, no, I think just said it.
Either of you run for office over there?
No, I, it's too late. I don't know.
We're starting to pry ourselves.
So next year, okay.[1756.82] So next year, okay.
Well, I have, I'll have to recover from our policy meeting first.
Anything else, Beverly?
That's it. Have a wonderful, wonderful, restful, celebrant, joyful summer to everybody, and thank you for all the hard work, students, teachers, staff.
Katie? Katie?
I believe would be appropriate for us to close on making a motion that we accept all of the school SIP plans, because we didn't do that, and if we don't, they become.
It's not necessary anymore. The superintendent accepts them now. The law has changed.
Oh, shucks. I really would like to. They did an awesome job from the elementary to the, to the Ahern to the high school.
Anything else, Kate?
No.
Martha?
Nope.
Paul?
Yes, and maybe you did this, but I'm not sure. I think I need a vote to accept the budget summary statement.
Yes, we do.
All right, the motion to accept it made by Martha, seconded by Kate. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion passes five to zero.
You can make the motion.
Just one, one last thing, very quickly. With all of the hard work that's gone on this year, I'd like to point out that there's no way that any of the work that I've come across with could ever have been done without the help of Michael Larry, Pam Lee, Jim McGowan, Connie McLaughlin, Caroline Clark, and Paul Bordelotti and company. And I'd also like to thank Caroline Clark in terms of, Caroline has really stepped up to the plate this year and has worked a lot of extra hours because of a pregnancy leave of absence that then the individual decided they didn't want to come back full-time. And we've really been short-staffed in the business office on the bookkeeping side all year. But there's no way that a lot of the success, the majority of the success that I've enjoyed and the things that we've brought to the committee wouldn't have been able to have and love the help of these people and the team. So I want to say thank you.
Beverly, there's a motion to adjourn.